Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. I need to get used to saying 2021. And
Somebody's on hold.
And we have a new protocol to relax everyone with nice piano music first.
I'm ready.
Okay, this, uh, this is our, um, school board briefing. Um, if, if you take a look, if you take a look at the agenda, you will see that RSM is scheduled to go first. However, uh, they will be delayed in getting here and, uh, I would just like your consensus to move them to the end. Everything else will stay the same. We'll be starting with operations. So if I could just see a board consensus that, um, you approve moving RSM to the end and
Ms. Fisher.
Okay, so it's unanimous. And that means we will start with operations. Draft site plan.
Madam Chair.
We have several people.
Uh, I, I just want to confirm whether or not Ms. Giovinelli is on the phone and I do know
That's right. Thank you.
And I do know that Ms. Fisher, both of them are excused.
Ms. Giovinelli, are you on? Ms. Giovinelli? I guess not yet. He's, she hasn't, all right, she should be connecting and Ms. Fisher later on.
That's why there was music because they're
Oh.
But they hadn't called in.
Well, the music was really nice though. Okay, so, uh, we have presentations, uh, first presentation by Operations Department, draft site plan for Astero K and NN, and we have, um, Ms. Kathy Eba, and who else will be presenting today?
Dana Hume.
Dana Hume with Johnson Engineering.
Okay, any, any of the others coming up? Okay, so thank you for being here and it's, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We are excited to present to you what is the first blush of the draft pre-K eight, elementary K and middle school NN, which is being designed for, uh, construction on Three Oaks Parkway in Astero. Um, I think if you remember back to May, we had a presentation to you about potential opportunities of where we would locate this site. Um, we selected this Three Oaks property, which we already owned. Um, the site plan is for 2,300 students, so the, uh, the core facilities have been built to the 2,300 student stations, but the number of classrooms is built to 1,800 student stations. We did that for future growth. We know that today we have a demand already in Astero area for 1,800 students at the middle school and elementary school level, but that we do not need the full capacity of 2,300. However, we want to ensure that we have the land use entitlements from the, from the Village of Astero for the full 2,300 student stations. So we are, the site plan, core facilities is developed to the 2,300 student stations, but the number of student stations in the buildings are only for the 1,600 student stations. And Dana, when he walks through the site plan with you, will explain that. Um, in terms of where we are in the process, we are in the, because, uh, as we discussed back in May, we have to get new land use entitlements on this property. The comprehensive plan, land use designations do not, um, provide for a school site. We are in the process working through the Village of Astero's, uh, comprehensive plan amendment process to re-secure the new land use designation of public facilities. We had a meeting, uh, the Tuesday before, um, Christmas break. It was continued until next Tuesday because of some concerns that were raised by the citizens. We will be bringing back and addressing those concerns, which Dana will address in his presentation. Uh, the three major concerns were the ability to pull traffic off of Three Oaks Parkway and staged onsite for, um, dismissal and for arrival. Stormwater concerns that deal with the property to the, the development to the north, Copper Oaks, those, uh, the stormwater concerns are, are based on Copper Oaks not being properly developed. They don't have enough stormwater and they've been using our site for stormwater containment. Um, while that's something that their property should really address, we have tried in our site plan to try to do our best to be able to address that concern. The fourth, the third concern was the use of public facilities on the site after school hours. And then the final one was the location of this site. Um, there were some residents who feel this property is better served out east on Corkscrew Road where new growth is happening, but we are, we have shown, um, in previous presentations why the demand today is where it is and this is the right site for this location. At that, I'm going to turn it to Dana who will walk through the site plan and then we will look forward to your comments. Again, this is just a draft, so we are open to, uh, hearing your thoughts and, um, modifying as, as appropriate.
Thank you and good afternoon, board members. Um, again, Dana Hume with Johnson Engineering. I'm one of the principals at our firm and, um, have the pleasure of not only designing this school, but I've also done Benita Springs High School, Gateway High School, currently doing middle school MM and the site work around elementary school J. So, a- as we started, uh, with our site plan, um, and some of the key items that we thought of out front, um, in developing this was what we've heard a lot from the community and from the county is stacking. And, uh, we know that that's a challenge at a lot of schools. Uh, in fact, I did, um, uh, Tree Line Elementary renovations to try and provide more stacking out at that school over last summer. And so I don't have a pointer, so I'm just going to kind of describe in the general areas. So, we, we come into the site, although we're shoved, uh, really close up against the post office, we're lining up with the intersection across the street. Um, that's a very common practice where you try and line up major driveways. Um, and so we come into the site, we've got a long drive, um, as you come in, um, and then at the first intersection, you split off. So when you go to the north, that is the bus loop road. And so only buses will be heading in that direction. And then as you follow it all the way around to the back, you can see where we're, we have all of the buses, uh, where, where they'll be loading and unloading all of the students. As you come back up to that intersection and you turn right or south, we start our, um, stacking for parent pickup. That's also the location where faculty and staff and parents that have to go into the building will utilize a separated lane with a concrete median that will bring you into the, the parking area. Um, so back on the stacking, so we have double stacking coming all the way around until that bend right there, and then we go to triple stacking. So we've tried to maximize the stacking that we can get on this site. And that has been one of the big concerns from the village is that we do not stack out on Three Oaks. And, um, that has been one of the points that, as Kathy mentioned, uh, we've been meeting with their planning and zoning board that we've been going back and forth on with them. And so before we provide them with any kind of a site plan, we wanted to give you the opportunity to see this first because you are most important. Um, so although the villi, uh, the village will not see this detailed site plan, we have a bubble plan for them. We wanted to kind of walk through all the components with you all first. So we have all the stacking. Um, the stacking will provide, I think it's 257 vehicles. We have done some stacking studies of all the similar schools in the area and the closest school provides 100 vehicle stacking. So we've got more than double that at this school. Um, the, the school itself, we've concentrated the school into maximizing the land use intensity for the area. Um, so as you can see, we have the main school, um, and then the media center and the cafeteria area. So that's, uh, approximately 119,0900 square feet, that building alone. And then we have the gym and the gym is 34,900 square feet. And then up in the top, up in that corner is the central energy plant, which is about 5,000 square feet. So we have a total of approximately 160,000 square feet of building on the site. Um, we've tried to maximize it and also to take, keep into mind, um, how we're going to include traffic patterns for the students and those kind of things. So one of the things that this building provides for us, when I say us, the school district, is it gives us a lot of cost savings, um, compared to your traditional elementary and middle school. So traditional middle school and elementary schools, they each have their own media center, their own cafeterias and all of that, um, and administration areas. So we're going to have one area for each one of those. So the administration area, as you come in, of course, is the, is the central point of access to the whole campus. And there's only one. And, and that's the beauty of this facility, um, that is prepared, being prepared by Harvard Jolly as the architect on the, uh, on the project. We also only have one gym, which gives the elementary school students an opportunity to utilize a gym where usually they're in a cafeteria. At least they were when my three children were coming up through the system here. And I think that that's a great opportunity where they get to actually be in a gym instead of a cafeteria with tables and moving all of that stuff around. You also have the opportunity where you can have some of the older kids mentoring some of the younger kids. And they're right there in the same facility. And, and I see that more and more, um, as I get older, I hear more and more opportunities where our older students, whether they're the later schools, middle school or high school students, are going back to the younger kids and they're mentoring them. And I think that's a great program. We also ha, only have one bell time. So, uh, we had a lot of discussion about this. Um, and because it's a K, uh, pre-K through eight, we came upon the time of 8:55 to 3:55. And we did that intentionally so that we could try and miss that, those peak traffic times at eight o'clock and five o'clock. Actually, it's about 7:30 to 8:30 and then 4:30 to six or seven, depending on where you're trying to go. And so that's why we picked that time was so that, yes, there's still going to be some traffic and we all know that. And if anybody's familiar with Astero and the area that we're proposing to build this school, it's just a busy area. I mean, it's traffic no matter, um, what you're doing. And so we tried to, you know, slide that time a little bit later so that we could avoid that peak rush hour time. And then to kind of touch on a couple of points that Kathy had brought up, um, with the village. So the subdivision to the north of us, Copper Oaks, they have some serious water management issues. Uh, I have talked with the Director of Public Works for the village, um, who I actually used to work with at our firm. And, um, he explained to me what their challenges are. And Ms. Eba was right. They currently utilize the school site for storage of their stormwater, uh, which will have to change when we go to build our school. So what we have to make sure is that we still pro, uh, provide conveyance for their off-site drainage, which we fully intend to. Um, like I said, we've already talked to, uh, the Public Works Director, um, had a couple of conversations with him. The next step will be as we start developing the site and doing detailed design is to make sure that we have a conveyance system along our north property line, which is what they use for their outfall and make sure that we leave it, you know, equal to or better than. And our intentions are to improve it, uh, because we've already identified a bunch of problems that they have with their conveyance system that is actually on the school site's property. Um, one of the other items that the Village of Astero is really, uh, talking a lot about is shared uses. And we've been very clear that, you know, at this point in the design process, we are designing a school. We are not designing playgrounds for the community or anything like that. Our main focus right now is the school because we have to get the school designed and permitted and get the construction manager moving forward so that we can open up this school in August of 2023, which means we need to start construction at the end of this, uh, at the end of this year. And so that's our main focus. But what we have done with this site plan is in the front southeast corner that Kathy is circling, um, although we do have some utilities going through that area, that is going to be open space. So that is future opportunity for the village to come in and work with you all to provide some kind of programming in there. The other thing that we did, what we've done is in the back of the property up against I-75 is we have, we, we're calling it out as play area, but in essence, it's big green open space area that again, the village can program. And if they want to partner with you guys, you know, it, it will be up to, to you, the board, to determine on how you want to work the, uh, interlocal agreement regarding that. Uh, we are providing utilities, stubbing out utilities to that back corner so that if they want to come in in the future and add buildings, add a restroom, do whatever they want, that they will at least have that capability. So we are doing, you know, the best that we can at this, at this junction, if you will, in the design of setting space aside for the Village of Astero, uh, and their future uses.
Dana, can I interject also?
Absolutely.
The, we've also, the MyBoss parking lot area?
Mike, okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, the bus parking lot area hat, is been strategically developed so that when we don't have buses there and it would be after school hours for the parents and other community members, first there's a parking lot right here that would allow about 50 cars. And then the bus parking area will be accessible for vehicular use so that they can have access to this back play area, the back play field and the softball fields, as well as the gym or cafeteria without giving them access to the rest of the campus. So we have tried very hard to think about if we were the community and we were a user of the community, how would we be able to access this facility and still maintain the safety and security of the campus?
And we are not doing this in a bubble. So we have had communications with, uh, the Village of Astero staff, um, and showing them, uh, our very, one of our original, uh, draft site plans, uh, where they talked about the shared use and where they thought, you know, they may want to put some, some shared use, uh, facilities. And so that's why we have done what we've done, uh, especially in the back of the, of project with where the fields are at and the gym and all of the parking. So they will be able to utilize that. We can secure that from the rest of the campus, which will be key in keeping all of the public out of the school facility itself. So as, as we move forward in the process, um, you know, we are very early in the process. So now is the time that if we made changes, uh, to the plan, it wouldn't be detrimental, um, because we haven't gotten into the real detailed construction plans and specifications and all those kind of things. So that's why we're trying to have as many meetings as we can, not only with you all to get you all's input, but also with the village, not the planning and zoning board, uh, in particular, but with staff so that, um, we can try and incorporate this and then move, move on to the next step in the development of the school. Um, one of the things that's come up quite a bit is what are we going to do with Three Oaks Parkway and the traffic? So we're, we're at a point in time, uh, in the project, um, where we are just scratching the surface on what we're going to do out there. Um, as part of the process, as some of you may be aware of, we have to go back to the village, um, and you may be more familiar with the county's process, and get, uh, a development order. And as part of that development order, that is when our traffic professionals will prepare a tra, what they call a traffic impact statement. And as part of that traffic impact statement, it will detail what kind of improvements are needed off-site, which would be Three Oaks Parkway, um, to provide the capacity that we are looking for at the school. Just, we, we're anticipating just because of where it's at, that we're going to need a signal there, just like we did at Imperial, uh, in front of Benita Springs High School. Um, we would have done the same thing at Gateway High School, but the signal would have been too close to State Road 82. So that's why the roundabout came in, in front of the high school there. So we do anticipate a signal going in here. We do anticipate turn lanes. What we don't know right now is how long will those turn lanes? Um, do we have any other off-site impacts that we're going to need to look into? So, um...
Are you, are you ready for questions yet?
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to say, I, I think that kind of wraps up where I'm at. So we're ready for questions.
Well, and, and, and thank you, Mr. Hume. It was very informative. Okay, who has a comment or question? Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Uh, could you please tell me, when I'm looking at this, the entrance to the school, would, is that a, what, because right now, most of the developments there, everything is like a, a right turn. You cannot turn, most of them, you cannot turn left. So you have to go around and make a U-turn.
Correct.
So am I looking at, when you, and then you said a light, is that not two, two questions? Is that not too close to Corkscrew, a light? And then second, um, would they have to turn right and then go up and have the traffic on Three Oaks, even though it's not in the school, on Three Oaks to make a left-hand turn to go back?
Okay. So let me start with the first question. We, uh, there are certain guidelines as it relates to intersection improvements and signals. And we have already looked at the separation form, from Corkscrew, and we meet that separation to put a signal in there. The, the next step in getting a signal is you have to meet certain warrants. And we are confident that with the traffic and everything else going on there, that we'll be able to meet those warrants. Um, so a- as far as traffic circulation is concerned, um, people leaving the campus will be able to utilize that light. So they'll either be able to turn left or, you know, with a light, or they'll be able to turn right, uh, if they want to go north, you know, or left going south. Does that answer your questions?
No, yeah, it does. I, the reason I'm at, because my daughter lives there. So I know that every time I leave, I have to turn left, I mean, right out of her complex.
Right. Correct.
And then happen to make that turn. But if there's a light there, but to me, I was looking at Corkscrew and it seemed like it was so close that, um, I wasn't sure if a light would be acceptable.
Yes, yes. You, you know, like I said, there's criteria for minimum separations for signals and for full intersections. And so we've already reviewed that and we do meet that.
Okay. Other questions or comments, board members? Ms. Gittens?
Okay, thank you and thank you for the, uh, presentation today.
Yes, ma'am.
I was a little confused about the numbers for the school. And I've heard, um, at different times, different numbers. And when I, uh, I listened to the, uh, Village of Astero meetings, uh, concerning it and the presentation that was done, and the number that was given was 2,300.
Correct.
And I was also told that that is like the total number and that number came from the fact that there was an elementary and a middle school and that that was the total. That, that's a bit confusing to me as to which...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and finish.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So the, the school, when we open the school, it's going to have, uh, it's going to be for 1,800 students. But when we go through these But when we go through these processes, we want to make sure and go through them with the maximum capacity that the school would be built to in the future. Because we don't want to come in now and build, let's just say, for example, 100 feet of a turn lane, and then we add some more students, and then we got to go build another 150 feet of turn lane, you know, in the future. So we try and take the maximum number that we're going to have, which is 2,350, at this school. And that's what we're going to design everything to. And then in the future, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, the school can expand and not have to go through all of these processes. We've already gone through them all to take care of the maximum number of students.
So when you say expand, are you building the facility to hold 2,300 students now?
Ms. Gittens, what we are doing today is building a campus that can hold 2,300 students in the future. There are a few of our facilities on this campus that will be built to the 2,300, and that is your gym, your dining facility, your media center, and the administrative offices. Because those are areas that would be very costly for us to renovate in the future for a higher capacity. But the actual classroom building is being built for the 1,800 student stations. And if you look at my cursor, I know it's hard to see, but there's a section right here that I'm, that goes, this is the two-story elementary-middle school classroom wing. Right here is where we have identified where that additional wing could be placed. And we have designed the interior for it that would allow for either a separate building or for a continuation of the hallway as a, as part of the same building. So today, the student stations built on the campus are for 1,800 students. But the core facilities are being built for the 2,300 students, as well as, as Dana mentioned, any of our infrastructure for the campus is being built to the 2,300. It does two things. One, it's more economical for us to build it that way. And two, it ensures that we have the land entitlements for the full 2,300 student stations from the village and doesn't require us to go back and amend our land, or our land development privileges, entitlements, as they're called, from the village that would, which would, they could either approve or deny.
Yeah, and I understand that. What I'm saying is that it was confusing because there's been different numbers. And when I spoke with you all on Friday, the number was 1,200. So I wasn't sure where the 1,200 and the 1,600 and the 1,800 came in. I realize and understand what you're saying about the 2,350. Was the 1,200...
I'm not sure what you're speaking of 1,200. I did mention the number 1,600. So there's a FISH calculation.
Right.
1,600 is the number of student stations. But the capacity, and I know this is confusing, but there's a capacity equation that the state gives us for FISH. That capacity equation takes the 1,800 student stations and brings the true capacity of this campus down to 1,600. 1,600 total students. So while the, and I understand this is confusing, the 1,600 versus the 1,800 versus the 2,300, but the number of student stations that we're building to is 1,800. The capacity of the campus is actually 1,600, 200 student stations less, and that's based on a state-provided formula.
And the additional area that you showed there is if that were built out in student stations, that would, that's what takes it to the 23?
Yes.
Right. No, I understand that because I'm, you know, in comparing it to the middle school and East and Lambs, the same type of situation where you have capacity, but you're only building it for this amount. And out there, supposedly, you're going to build the rest of it out in the next few years. So I was trying to see, are you, is that the same thing? When do you expect to add that other piece to do the 2,300?
Honestly, unlike Lehigh where that capacity showed itself to be warranted, today, we have no idea when this is going, it is not in our, it is not even in our 10-year plan to build this out to the full 2,300. We're doing this for future growth. We will, as always, monitor our enrollment, and when it's warranted, we will add it to the, we will add it to the discussion for the capital improvement plan. But it is not in our five-year or our 10-year plans right now.
So you will open it with full capacity of 1,800 students, which is the amount without the 23?
Yes. We will, it will, this campus will open full.
It will open with 1,800?
Well, 1,600, but yes.
Okay.
We're running, we're running a little bit long, Ms. Gittens. Let me just see if anybody else has a question, and then we'll come back, we'll come back to you. Ms. Patrica?
Good afternoon or morning. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here, Mr. Hume. I appreciate your work on this.
My pleasure.
Ms. Yvai, I appreciate your work on this as well. These are questions that probably can't be answered today, and I don't want to take up your time with these questions today. They're more academic. I've had some constituents reach out with some concerns. So Dr. Atkins, if I can get with staff at some point to get answers to these questions, I'd appreciate it. You're actually going to be getting an email based on a nice, long conversation I had with a constituent this morning. Concerns about noise pollution and light pollution. It's my understanding, based on my own experience with children in our schools, that we don't have a lot of nighttime events at elementary and middle schools. Are there plans for outdoor lights here?
The only plans for outdoor lights are in the parking area.
But we're not talking about this play, play field wouldn't have outdoor lights for night?
No, there are no, there are, none of the fields are proposed to be lighted at this time.
Okay. And so when we talk noise pollution, after-school activities have to be concluded before it gets dark, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And in terms of the academics, I know, I think I've discussed this before with Dr. Savage, the, I know the benefits of having older children on a campus with younger children, but I do think that there are some concerns in the community that we just, we just have to address those concerns. Questions are raised about a kindergartner walking into a bathroom and an eighth grader being there, and the appropriateness of that, and the appropriateness of older kids being on buses with younger kids when older kids are on social media and younger kids might not have access to that kind of thing. You know, those, those are the kinds of concerns that I'm hearing in the community. And I wanted to raise them today because I've asked a lot of people to watch this briefing, and I want them to know that their questions and concerns are being represented. And I will ask for answers to those issues at some point in the future. It doesn't really have anything to do with what you've presented here, but they are concerns out there in the community. And I also know that as we get deeper into this, more of these answers will be forthcoming. So that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question? Ms. Jivinelli, have you joined us? I guess not. Ms. Gittens, can your question be answered fairly quickly?
I presume so. When I, also in watching the Village of Astero meeting, there was discussion about the fact that the property is 70% wetlands and that that wants to fill when everything is done, that that would be taken care of. And we, a few months ago, in talking about this, asked about the cost of filling that much of the property. And it may not be something you can answer now, but I would like to know what the cost of that is.
I do not know the answer to that at this point, but we can certainly get that to you.
Okay. The other, the other questions I can deal with later. Thank you very much.
Is that Ms. Fisher or Ms. Jivinelli? Hello? Ms. Jivinelli, Ms. Fisher?
Ms. Jivinelli should be on the phone.
I can hear you.
Yeah, we're, we're just concluding presentation about the site plan at Astero. And I, since we're running quite a bit over, we're going to move on at this point, but I suggest that any other questions that you have...
Excuse me, Madam Chair, but I think that everyone should have an opportunity. I understand moving on, but if any of the other members...
Well, she hasn't heard the presentation, but you...
You haven't, well...
Did you have something that you wanted to ask, Ms. Jivinelli?
Well, are we going to continue on with, with the proximity in the Astero school? I could ask at the end.
Okay, so you're not aware of this. What's happened is we, this is actually our first presentation because RSM has been moved to the end. And so that's why we're already at this point. So we're about to move into the proximity.
Okay, but it's the same, it's not the same people presenting on the proximity? Or is it? Yes, it is.
But it's different. Did you have a pressing question for the site plan?
Back with the site plan that I was looking at, my only question is, when the site plan was planned, have we spoken to the, all the other schools that are near there and maybe have a partnership with them as well? Because, you know, the charter school's right down the street.
Can that be, either of you answer that?
Ms. Jivinelli, I'm not quite sure I understand what the question is. Can you, we have not talked to the charter school down the street. Is there a specific issue that you would like us to talk to them about?
Well, my only concern is that there's so many schools within this proximity that we want to make sure that we have a good relationship with everyone. So now you're telling me that we really haven't even spoken to the charter school that's literally down the street, I mean, a couple blocks.
Well, I guess you can put it that way, but I think that, that we have, we have an ongoing relationship with our charter schools that's done through the charter school office. So, you know, when it comes to the reality of the, of what we're trying to do here, these folks are looking at where do we have the student population? Where can we locate a school that's in the closest proximity to the majority of our students? Which is, you know, you heard, you may not have heard in the earlier part of the presentation that some suggestions for a further, a more southern site location, but that's just simply not where the majority of our students are located.
Back in time.
And actually, you know, when it comes to, not that we're on charter schools, but I do believe, particularly since, you know, Ms. Kennedy has come on board, that, that we've had good relations, but those relations have even been strengthened because we've had additional, I think, more communication than we've ever had in the past. So we're pretty happy with, you know, I think, our charter school partners at this point. But we can always, you know, we can always work to strengthen those partnerships.
Correct. That's, that's really my point because it, as a community, we need to think of, think of everything as a community and, and be inclusive. And so that's really important when we're building new schools.
Like, we've had ongoing conversations with the folks over at Gateway Charter High School is another little example about the future use of that particular building and their plans moving forward. With plans to talk about what our future plans are, the demographic growth, different demographics, and the growth that we see into the future, and how their plans could actually align better with ours is just another example.
And that's, and that's great. I mean, to have the good relations with the whole public and community and not, like I said, be, you know, not, you know, inclusive and make sure that we are working with our community. That's really what's important here instead of, you know, and that concerns me that we really haven't, we have seen a school, like a brand-new school. So, you know, I'm glad that the charter school's relationship is better now under Ms. Kennedy. And so I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I forgot one thing. I think, Ms. Yvai, you and I discussed the potential of receiving a map that shows the student locations around this facility. You know, the dots that show where the kids live? If, if we could, that's another concern. Like you said, why are you locating the school there? Those maps, I think, are very, do a good job illustrating exactly why the demand is there.
We're in the process of drafting those maps in response for our, in response to the village as concerned.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you so much. And I just want to add, whenever you get the information from Ms. Patrica, probably send it out to all of us on the concerns with the different age groups riding the buses, because actually, I had that same, same question in the lunch periods and that sort of thing. So thank you very much. We have another presentation by operations. This is on elementary proximity. And let's see, we have...
This will be David Cates from Davis Demographics, Dominic Jemeli, and Courtney Gordon with our planning department.
Good afternoon. So I'm Courtney Gordon, and I also have David Cates with me. Dominic is here, should you have any questions for him as well. So I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here this afternoon. We're just going to provide a brief update with regards to the elementary proximity project. As you know, we've been working with Davis Demographics for close to a year now. This is a very important project for the district. And we'll get that PowerPoint. So before I turn it over to David, I will just go over a few things. The next slide is just a reminder of the key players in this project. The technical working group is made up of district staff from different departments and Davis Demographics. As a reminder, the goals of this project are to ensure an equitable and diverse enrollment of students, to develop stronger schools and community partnerships through community-based school zones, and also strategic improvement for transportation efficiency, which means reduce time on the bus for our students and reducing those early-morning bus stops to increase safety for our students. And then again, this timeline is, should be familiar. I won't go over the whole thing in detail, but again, it just serves as a reminder that we have been working with Davis Demographics for close to a year now. You'll see that right now, January of 2021, we are sharing our initial draft plans with the public. We did have our first public meeting at Dunbar High School last night. That went pretty well. We had about, I would say, close, I tried to do a head count, but I was presenting, but I'd say close to 50 attendees. Tonight, we will be at Cape Coral High School. Tomorrow, we will be at Three Oaks Middle, and then Thursday, we'll be at Varsity Lakes. Also, during the timeframe of January 2021, Davis is working on updating the 10-year forecast, and we will be revising the draft plans based on that and feedback we receive from the public. It is our anticipation that we will go back to the public in spring with the revised maps. It is our goal to have one or two draft plans to present to the board for approval. And again, we anticipate making that recommendation to the board in July of 2021. And if approved, we intend on implementing the plan in the 2022, 2023 school year. I will go ahead and turn it over to David now. He will walk you through the development of the draft plans and provide a detailed explanation of each of the draft plans.
All right. Thank you, Courtney. Good to see you all again. I think I saw about four of you last night at our meeting. Appreciated your, your attendance there. I'm going to give you... I'm going to give you a little overview of what's been going on since the summer with these plans that some of you already, well, I think all of you were briefed last week on seeing the plans. So what we've been doing since the summer, this is July to October, we broke the stakeholders up into three regions, west, east, and south. We were working on some initial ideas on what the plans would look like. And then collectively, the three groups asked the technical working group, ourselves, Davis, and key staff to come back with them with some scenarios that they could critique and make comments on. And those were the first three plans that you saw either last night or last week. Plans one, draft plans one, two, and three were our initial introduction to the stakeholders. And then we asked for their feedback, much like we're doing now with the public. We did that with the stakeholders two or three months ago. So we took all their, their comments and suggestions into account and came up with our draft plan four. So instead of eliminating any plans, we decided to share all four with yourselves and the public and let you see and that you comment on those as well. So that happened and culminated in December. We also then decided the official dates that we are being, doing the public meetings, which as Courtney mentioned, we started last night and we'll run through Thursday. So we have four of those planned, as well as obviously updating the board today on where we stand. Before I get into the plans, I just want to talk about some of the similarities. The first three plans, for the most part, in and around the plans, the boundary zones are very similar. The areas where they're different are more maybe in the Fort Myers area. I'll address that in a moment. But if you just look at kind of our bulleted points here, we have Bonita Springs in the south, kind of in the first three plans, in its own area that we call Q. The Cape Coral area and all the plans, I think, have about four zones, A, B, F, and G. Those are very similar. Area O, in the first three plans, contains Fort Myers Beach. In our fourth plan, it's, it's separated, but in the first three plans, it's not its own zone, it's part of area O. The other islands have their own zones, as they are now. You'll see on the map, but these letters will make more sense to you, the N, the E, and the R zones. Lehigh Acres, for the most part, is made up of three and a little bit of a fourth zone, but they're lettered K, L, and M on all the plans. And the tree line area, kind of in the central part of the district, east of Fort Myers, is an area Zone J. So those will all pretty much be similar, but you'll, you'll see those as we, we go through the maps, and I'll point out some of the differences here. So, let's see here. Okay. So this is draft plan one. And just to, again, to kind of give you the visual, these were the four zones in Cape Coral area, those letters we talked about. And kind of moving in a clockwise manner, area C here is making up Fort Meyer, North Fort Myers, I should say. And it goes in this plan all the way out to State Route 31. Area D kind of is the northeast portion of your district, has a little bit of Lehigh Acres over here. But Lehigh Acres is made up, for the most part, of K, L, and M. And the way that we're drawing up these plans, that L and M are going to be kind of conjoined until additional schools are built in M, because I think as it stands now, only one school is in M. So this is kind of be an LM area until more schools are built. Area Q here at the bottom, this is the Bonita Springs area. P is the Village of Astero and San Carlos in this setup. O is over here, and J in the central part. Again, these aren't really changing too much, I'll point them out. J is the tree line area. And here's the other islands, Pine Island, Sanibel. And you can see that Fort Myers Beach now is in these plans colored yellow to be joined with area O. These are the areas, right here, Fort Myers is where most of the change in North Fort Myers in the three plans. In this particular plan, H and I, which make up the majority of Fort Myers, is what I'm calling kind of a vertical approach, approach to this, or a north-south type of orientation. Some of the shapes of these areas might be, look a little strange, but they're built around where the schools are built and where the students live, and we've taken all that to, into account. Also, the, the capacities at each of these schools is really important. And like I mentioned, where the schools are located and other factors that we look at in order to come up with these particular choice options. So let me move on to plan two. I'm not going to go into detail about these other areas, because like I said, these are all pretty much the same. But if you kind of look in the central part of the maps, H and I are spread out a little bit more now, they're a little larger areas. It's still kind of a vertical approach to it, a north-south approach, just a different orientation. In this plan, area O extends a little bit more to the east. It was cut off right about over here. And most all the areas are, are still pretty similar. And C, just in the other plan, this is, has North Fort Myers all the way out to State Route 31, kind of is the, the setup for C. It's a little different configuration. And our draft plan three, what we did was, C is really a big difference between the first two plans. It crosses the river. So essentially, it makes up of a little bit of maybe Cape Coral, but mostly North Fort Myers. It stops right here at the freeway, doesn't go out to State Route 31. So D is a larger area because of that, but that's because C now crosses the river and has part of Fort Myers, the northern part, kind of crossing over. Right now, one of your current subzones is like that. It crosses up over to here, Bay Shore area. But we wanted to have a different look, a different option for the public to look at and have, to discuss whether you like it, whether you don't like that option. And what this also enables us to do is zones H and I, the bulk of Fort Myers, is more of the horizontal or east-west kind of configuration here. And most all these other areas are fairly similar or identical, except for the D. Like I said, D expanded a little bit to be able to grab some of the C areas so it can cross over the river. So it's, but all these areas, and we do look out over a forecast of 10 years based on our numbers, these, based on the schools that are there and will, that are being planned to be built out there, should be able to contain all the students within these zones. So that's why, you know, these boundaries all work for this particular plan. Plan four, this is a little bit more involved in explanation, because this was the feedback that we received on those first three plans, and there were a lot of really good suggestions, and we tried to take all of them into account, and I think we did a good job of it. So let me kind of point out a few things that are obvious here. You can see we called this area T. We put Fort Myers Beach back into its own separate zone, separated it from this O area. So now you have all the main island schools all have their own zone. C, we looked at using the State Route, State Route 41 or US 41 as the boundary line here, and the State Route 31 here as our boundary line for C. So we took some out of this, what was B, and we rezoned A and B a little bit to configure this. So there's a little bit of a change in the way A and B look, and C now straddles the highway but goes out between those two state, those routes right there. So D got shrunken a little bit. It's the same concept in all these plans, as I mentioned earlier. The L and the M zones, which make up a lot of the very dense part of Lehigh Acres, would be essentially one zone until potentially other schools are built in the, the southern part there in M. Then you keep circling down, you see area Q here. In those other plans, remember, it cut off down here, and it was pretty much just the Bonita Springs area. Well, with some suggestions from the stakeholders, we wound up going and using the Village of Astero boundary and grabbing all this, some of this potential development out here as being a zone in itself. And then P became the smaller zone area, and this is the very dense San Marcos area, right in the P zone area. And then O, again, a pretty self-contained area. The interesting other areas that we did was looking at the H and the I zones in this plan. So H is the bulk of Fort Myers. It's a very large zone in terms of density, in terms of schools, but it's much smaller in geography than the, I think it's South Zone One that it's part of right now. So for bus routes or bus times, it's still a nice, tight kind of boundary. But with the suggestion of the stakeholders, we looked at taking the very northern tip of Fort Myers and conjoining it here with other schools on the other side of the highway here, because we also look at where the students are enrolled. I think you know that we have mapped all your students, and we see those dots, and we also know what schools that they're choosing to go to. So we also look at that when we do these boundaries. We want to make sure, we can't, of course, please obsolete every parent, but we also want to take into account where they're choosing to send their students. So crossing this highway might seem like a drastic measure, but believe it or not, there's a lot of students that are, live over here that attend schools over here. So we took that into account as a suggestion. So that is, in a nutshell, what four was, and it was based on the comments from the first three plans. Right now, we are presenting these to the public. And we have, there's a dedicated webpage that I think you're all familiar with. I really have to commend your staff. We, we provided a lot of the content, but they really put together an excellent web, webpage on the link to your website that has all these maps. It has an interactive map if parents want to zoom in, zoom out. Find, because what do parents want? They want to know what's happening to them. They want to type in their address, they want to see where they fall in all these zones. All that information is at their fingertips. And there's also an online form that we're asking parents to go to and fill out and give us their comments on each plan, even rank the plans based on the ones they like the most or the least. And then we're going to be looking at those feedback here. So this kind of segues into the next step. This is, I think, our last slide. So as you know, in December, we made the announcement for the public meetings. So the community engagement really began. This is going to continue all the way through when we present the final options to you in July. As I keep mentioning, this is the week that we're doing our public meetings, of which you're free to attend as many as you'd like. The next stakeholder meeting, we don't know exactly when it's going to be. Tentatively, we're saying it's going to be sometime in February. Want enough time to collect all the comments, sift through it, organize it, and evaluate them, do our best. Maybe we don't have to do many adjustments, maybe we have to come up with a plan five or a plan six. Or maybe we narrow down these plans to what we have now. That's what we have to figure out over the next few months, how we want to move forward. And then, the other thing that keeps being brought up at these meetings, and we're definitely not ignoring it, is policy decisions. We want to get the maps out there and kind of the process to the public. Starting in February, after the public comments, we're going to work diligently on coming up with policies that will go along with these maps. When you don't know the areas you're talking about, it's hard to devise proper policies. And like I said, I've been doing this for 25 years. This is the process. It's just drawn out in your district for a year and a half. So it seems like we're taking a long time, but it's moving along at the right pace. This is the right time, after initial public comment, to start looking at policies. And when we re-present the new plans, let's say in the springtime, there will be a set of policies that we will share as well. And when we recommend to you to the board in July, we're not only, but we have these plans narrowed down, but we'll have some policies that we'll recommend as a, as a group as well. And that's it. So I'll open up for a question.
Yeah, and before we move to the questions, I just want to clarify something for everyone. When you say evaluate public comments, you're talking about all the comments that are going to come to the website, is it?
Yes. There is a link now on the site where the, I don't know if you've tried it yet, but if you click on the form, it gives you spaces where you could comment on each plan or none of them if you don't want to, rank them if you want. It comes directly to district staff. We've already received some. There's also a dedicated email site, so that if you don't want to do that, they just want to email. We have that as well. We have already received comments on those. But the, shall we say, the floodgates are open now. I think it went live on Friday before we started any of these presentations. So they were trickling in, but I'm assuming after this week.
Yeah.
Only a few weeks to evaluate.
I definitely want it that mentioned. I know there were four of us last night at the meeting, and those links were, were mentioned. Could you, for the listening public, could you give those links again, or just for people who want to go? Because there are going to be a lot of people who may not attend, and I don't think it's in this presentation, is it?
Not in this one. In my public presentations, it's in there. I'm trying to think, is there a way to get on there?
If we have internet access on that computer, we could navigate to the website.
Would I, you want me to do that? Do I have your permission to do that?
Yeah. And in the meantime, Ms. Morgan has a question while you're doing that.
Actually, I have some comments, because four of us were there. But for those who weren't there, you should know that this is the presentation, these are the slides, and this is verbatim what was said last night. And I expressed my concern to Dr. Atkins about this presentation, because the presentation, well, there are a couple of things. First of all, there's really no conversation that I think responds to the kinds of concerns communities will bring to us, like what demographics were involved in creating these zones, economic, racial, cultural. All of the things that we asked them to bring, and I know they did, because we've been in the workshops with them. This took place at Dunbar. The most significant changes in this map are in that area, and it was not highlighted or addressed directly. So I did ask the superintendent to think, to think about, and staff to think about, how we present in the various zones and what kind of information it is that we are sharing with the public. My concern is that if we're not upfront today about some of the things that went into these decisions, we'll get further down the road, and then the questions will come up. And so I just, I, I don't, I'm trying really hard not to be critical, but in a negative way, but to suggest that I think we have some work to do with respect to engaging the public on this issue. So those are my comments.
Okay. And I think I'm going to reiterate, before I call on Ms. Gittens, what Ms. Morgan said, because after the presentation, I actually met a lady who has a five-year-old son, and she's happened to be African-American. And even after the whole presentation, she still was saying, well, is this because of builders? Is this because of developers? They want, and I said, no. And I explained to her about, you know, the whole idea of looking at, as Ms. Morgan said, all the demographics. And she just felt so much better. I mean, it took a while for me to talk with her about it, but I, I do believe that's a good point. And also, to have that, and I guess it's up on the screen right now, the links for everybody to go to and, and look at the maps. Okay, Ms. Gittens had a comment or question?
Yeah, and it's in the same vein as, as what both of you were saying, but I had written down a note as we were going through this. I'm going to continue to say that when we roll out things, when we talk to the community, that we have got to put it in a level that they understand enough to know what's in it for them. The level that we present things is wonderful for educators. It is wonderful for, I'm sorry, I'll move this over. And it's wonderful for, I guess, you know, a higher education level or whatever. But we're talking about people who are sending their students for us to educate. They are integrally involved in this process, or should be. I don't see, if I were someone who has four or five children in this system, and you're telling me now we're going to be possibly going to different schools, to me, it is not on a level of communicating to me why this is important. Why is it important for me to leave my four children and come to hear you speak at one of the of these sites? What is in it for me? Why is it important? We have not said it's important to you to be there because this is going to form and shape your child's education for the next several years based on where they are going to be attending. I wrote a question, for example, Zone P. In one, two, and three, Zone P was rather large. And the fourth one, Zone P, is the smallest one on the map. And if I am correct in understanding, that is Carlos, San Carlos Park. And there is nothing that shows us the demographic. I know personally the demographic of that area, but if that is going to be that small and mostly San Carlos, what is that going to say to your racial equity? And what is the academic level, one, two, three, or four, of most of the students in that small area? That is a concern for me. That was my concern about proximity from the very beginning. And I keep being told, yes, we will make sure that it's equitable. But if you take an area as small as San Carlos Park with the demographic that it is, and it is probably not the highest level two, threes, and fours, because right now they're going to Estero and some of the other schools, and you're pushing them all into that, that is a concern. I understand neighborhood schools and I would love for everybody to walk to school, like I did. It was fun. But not if it's not going to be equitable. And that's the question that I continue to have. How, I hear you saying you're going to, but how are you going to be equitable academically, racially, and all the things like we were saying before?
Ms. Gittens, one of the things that we've had discussions about that I really think that that type of, that's where the policy comes into play. So, and when you, that's where the policy comes into play.
And I understand.
For example, let me, for example, I really believe, and believe, have believed this since I started down this journey, that policies such as level, student levels, in terms of an assignment, have to be a part of how we do our assignment of students. We have to make that equitable distribution and you have to look at a factor such as achievement level. Where you're not going to get there. And so there's going to have to be with this some very difficult policy decisions that go along with how we unfold this system. Because if we don't, then some of the things that we've learned since 1998 are as if we didn't pay attention. So I'll give you an example. When we started down this journey, I think that we really had an equitable distribution of students. At least, I know around where I was, if you went to Fort Myers Middle School, Lee Middle School, Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, if you went to Franklin Park, if you went to all of those schools, the distribution of students was fairly equitable at that time. Now, there were court cases that occurred. We had to change the way we did assignment. We looked at how could we improve, because there was a lot of people that were concerned about our transportation costs, as they still are. So we moved to a sub-zone system, but we changed the policy. And so what we saw happen is we saw the resegregation of some of our schools. It's why we had 23 DA schools. Okay? So we've worked very hard as a school district to eliminate, so now we have zero DA schools. Those were decisions that we made, policy decisions and decisions that I made in terms of placement of staff so that we have more of an equitable distribution of resources and resources including human capital. I think that there are things that we certainly can do in this, and they've done them. I know Davis Demographics has worked with school districts to provide a more equitable distribution of students than what we currently have. And again, I think that's where that policy comes into play. Now, the other thing that you're talking about, the San Carlos, that's where the public input comes in.
And that's, and that, not to cut you off, and I know we're short on time as well, but I do want to say, I understand what you're saying. I agree with, you know, where we've been and where we're going. I am not against the proximity. What I'm trying to say is that the statement you just made, that's where the public input comes in. The smallest area, the most kind of, to me, the one that needs the most understanding, are we doing a specific presentation in that area and saying, like we were saying before, this is the presentation for this area to explain to you, this is the school, this school, this school, our schools that you would be able to attend? That's what this process is about. We're at the $30,000 mile level and we should bring it down to this level and take it to those individuals. And I will end with this. I was there last night as well, and one or two of the people that spoke to me, the first thing they said was, "We're headed back for segregation." And I said, "No, you know, we got to look at it and watch." And they said, "Yeah, show me." That is, so, and I'm saying, what will happen to the whole process in people's minds if you don't start out giving them the nuggets they need? Like Ms. Morgan said, we're playing catch-up all the time instead of taking it at that sixth grade level and saying, "Okay, this is your area. These will be your schools. Here's how we're going to do this." Everybody knows that this district is great and it's smart and run by smart people. But I have always said, someone that is a good teacher is someone who can break it down to teach from the lowest to the highest. And we focus up here instead of in the middle somewhere. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think...
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, just, I mean, we've certainly heard your feedback. We've heard Ms. Morgan's feedback. And I know from the experience with our referendum that it takes really just what you're talking about, because the person, in other words, to buy into what you're trying to do has to fully understand what you're trying to do. I think we were able to do that with our referendum. We certainly had to do that presentation, tweak that presentation. We got a lot of feedback and we made adjustments along the way. We will do more of the same here. I also, one of the reasons that Adam is a part of our group is that I think there's an individual that does relate very well with audiences and with our community members is why he's in that position and why I want him to help with this. So we take the feedback and we continue to work presentations to where we get them the way we want so that they do reach people, that they do have their, they do have a full understanding. Because, believe me, I understand this is one of those highly political issues that when this rolls out, if the community says, "I don't understand," or the community is like, "We're against this." Where did we, when did we have input? If they're asking those questions two years from now, then we haven't done our jobs and we'll have consequences as a result, so.
And the last thing that I wanted to say about the process is, the next process you were saying is that you will gather all the information, then you will get with the stakeholder group, and then come back to the board. And not, you know, severe criticism, but this presentation to us should have been before it rolled out in the community because then we can back you up. But if we don't have this presentation before the community does, then we're, you know, trying, "Oh yeah, it's going to be okay and it's going to be fine." So I'm just saying, timing is important.
Okay. Mrs. Patrica?
So I think that the, I've talked to a lot of people about what's going on here and trying to get a lot of people to get engaged in the process. And Dr. Atkins, what you just said is very true. Everyone I talk to, when I say talk to, I mean colleagues on governing bodies across the county. I want them to be aware that we're engaging in this so that if they get questions or concerns, they can send them our way. And, I mean, every single one of them has said, "Good luck," because when you change school zones, you know, that's a big problem. And I agree with you that we do need to educate and help people understand. We also have to be open to their feedback. And that's what I'm hearing you say, Dr. Atkins. I'm hearing you say, as we sit here and give you this feedback, this is what you want to hear. I didn't know that this was the presentation that went out to the public. I'll be there Wednesday night. And I have to tell you, as a parent, if I walk in and I see this map, I have no idea where I live and I have no idea where my children's schools are. I need the presentation that was given to me as a board member back there as opposed to this map. My brain is missing the map chip in it. So I look at this and I think I live somewhere around there. I have no idea where Pine Woods is. I have no idea where Benita Middle is. Is Benita Middle still an option for my kids? Yes, because we're not talking about middle schools. But is Pine Woods still an option? Is Three Oaks Elementary still an option? That's what parents want to know when they walk into these meetings. They want to see the school and they want to be able to say on the map, "I live here. My kid's school is there. Oh no, I can't go there anymore." How are we going to work around that? If that makes sense.
May I respond to that?
Please.
So at the public meetings last night and going forward, we do, in addition to going over this presentation, David does walk them through. We go to the website and we show them the interactive web map. And he does an explanation of how they can type in their address and zoom in and out and see what zone they would fall in and what schools. And in addition to that, those large-scale maps that we brought to all of you during our one-on-ones last week, we have four sets of those of each of the draft plans stationed around the room in a socially-distanced manner so that people, basically the first, they're hour-and-a-half-long meetings, the first 25 minutes or so is David and I presenting. The remaining hour is open for them to move around the room and view their maps in obviously a socially-distanced manner. And then members of the technical working group are mingling and stationed around the room. We identify ourselves as a person to approach to ask questions. So that was how it went on last night and will go on for the next three meetings.
That's better. I will, I will say, and you're aware of this, I was concerned about demographics with the P and Q on Draft Four. And what was the last thing I was concerned about? I'll remember it and get back to you.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. Thank you. I know I've looked at this numerous times and I was there last night as well. And that was an issue for a lot of the people there worrying about the demographics and everything. So what everyone else has said here, I totally agree with them. But I also was there till the end when people were coming and speaking to you all that were there. And when you explain it, like Ms. Vaughn said, she had the opportunity to explain, you know, the breakdowns and, you know, the demographics of pulling people from here to here to make it diverse. I think that it's really important that we let people know that because that's not stated in any of the meetings or the conversation that you're having there at all. So that definitely is in the back of their head the whole time. And perhaps to make it easier, because I know that we had talked about it because I pretty much know Lee County, it was really difficult for me to zone in, in my head, of what streets we were in. So if we had maybe a few laptops there where we could, and I know you do the presentation to show them how to get there, and I've gone and played on that, which is great, but to have that right there where they can zoom in and go, "Oh, okay, I understand. These are my schools." And I know Adam had talked to some people, Courtney, I know you had, you know, everybody was there speaking to the people that were there and helping them to understand that better on the one-on-one. But I think that that one-on-one needs to be broader in the beginning because those people who left and didn't have that one-on-one, now their mind is maybe somewhere else. So I think that if we can maybe incorporate some of that into your presentation, I think that would just help out a lot better. And then on page six, I was just noticing that Fort Myers, for some reason, was not on there as H, that was missing off of the, what was that? You had a list of all the zones, you know, the draft plans one through three, Benita, all the way down to Tree Line area, but H is not on there for Fort Myers. And then...
The reason why, these were the similarities and H and I change on every map. So that's why they were not on that particular slide because it was more focusing on the zones that didn't change for those first three maps.
Okay. And that's why H and I on certain maps are one way and then they're flip-flopped on the others?
Yeah. We want people to be aware that there's a lot of similarities between the three plans. And then when I went in and I looked at each of the maps, I was focusing on the ones that weren't similar, such as the H and the I zones and the C zone.
Okay. And then my last and final, I know that you all, in doing the studies, you have, you have the population, so around all these zones and everything, correct? That was part of your study of determinant? So that right there is something that we need to be sharing with that because I know when we were asking questions on our one-on-one with you all, you know, that was a question that we could ask, "What about San Carlos? What about this area, that area?" But if we could, to share that information, that would be also helpful.
Okay.
And thank you for being here and doing all this.
Okay. Before we get to round two of these, I just want to check and see if our callers, Ms. Jivinelli, are you there?
I am.
A question?
I do. Everyone pretty much has addressed my concerns. One of the things that I don't hear is where EDAC is involved in this. I really think that with EDAC being involved, then we can help, that committee can really help us with the community in making sure that we aren't going to fall back in the 1998 segregation issue. So I think that's very important. And I don't know what stage that they should be involved, but maybe once we, they can be involved in defining the different zones. And then, and then people can identify where their child would go to school and their options they would have with what schools are in their zone.
EDAC was brought in and provided with a presentation pretty early on in the process. I don't remember the exact timeframe, but it was over the summer. In fact, I remember I was still working remotely. And EDAC was also, had a large presence last night as well at Dunbar High School.
Yes.
Okay, that definitely should know that.
As a matter of fact, Ms. Jivinelli, it was the January EDAC meeting because EDAC had expressed an interest in hearing a presentation. So the group took advantage of last night's presentation. And I have no doubt that the people that make up that committee will want to get more involved. Did Ms. Fisher come to the phone yet?
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more question. So then I would be curious to know what plan EDAC would mostly wanting to approve, like, you know what I mean? Their opinion on the plan.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I'm Leah San and it's a citizens' group, so they make those decisions. But I saw a couple of the members last night, talked to a couple of them, and I feel pretty sure that they're going to want to follow up. And so I feel pretty sure that's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Okay. Ms. Morgan and then Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, just a very...
Ms. Fisher, is she in?
Oh, is she? I asked.
She did.
She didn't answer.
This is just a very quick comment. After the presentation was finished, somebody raised their hand in the audience and the response was, "We're not having any questions. We're just going to go to the individual easels." I'm not sure that that's, I think people learn listening to other people ask questions. And so I do think there needs to be an opportunity for people to hear what others are saying and thinking. I mean, I love the idea of having the individuals at each of the easel sites, but I am concerned when we say, "There will be no questions." And, you know, if you want to have, ask a question, you have... you have to go talk to an individual at this site, so...
Yeah, and actually, that was one of those EDAC members, so I know it's going to be followed up. Ms. Gittens.
Okay. I've always been told if you have, you know, something, complained about something, do you have to have something in its place? So here's my "in its place." My suggestion would be that when people come in, they'd be, you know, there'd be computers out, they'd be given a card or something, or have it up on the screen as to how to get into the site and find... And the assignment is, like a bell ringer, find your address and look around, you know, on the site. Then you can also have with that some of the information about the different schools that are within their site. And then after that, have the Q and A type thing. What questions do you have? And it's like Ms. Morgan said, you know, questions feed questions. But then they would have some knowledge to ask questions. If you are asking them in the beginning, and they don't even know what to ask, that's why there's not any questions. But people like hands-on, so if you say, come on in, have a seat here, you know, go to this computer, find your address, kind of play around with it for a minute, and then we will ask questions later. That's the teacher in me. Thank you.
Yeah, and we are running a little bit over, but I think this is an important discussion. And earlier, I'm digesting all that was said here. It sounds like we, as board members, are on one page on this issue, that, A, it should have been... I mean, we had the one-on-ones, but it should have been brought to us before it went out to the community, because as you listen to a lot of the comments here, I think they could have been incorporated into this presentation. And then the other thing is, it sounds like, and I'll be at least number three on this, registering my questions about Draft Plan Four. Two other board members and maybe others didn't say it, but that Zone P with San Carlos shrinking so much, and then Estero, Benita, a huge area, that's also a concern for me. And as I said, at least two other people brought that same thing up. But we really appreciate all the work you've done, and hopefully you can incorporate many of the things that we've said today. And my closing comment is, if you start with this huge misunderstanding that apparently some of us heard last night from the people who were there, that, oh, it's going to re-segregate, or, oh, it's just the builders, it's just this person, that person, we have a much bigger gulf to swim than if we, right up front, give the goal of this to bring it back into more neighborhood-type schools while having the diversity that we desire and that is educationally sound. So great job so far, but I think there's a little more that needs to go on the drawing board. And I think my fellow board members, did you want to add one more thing?
Just, yes, I do. Regarding P and Q, because I know we had conversations about that, that was something that we spoke about on Four. And the reason for Q was because it's more of a retirement... It was based on population on students, so it was more retirees in that Q area. That's why it was larger. And then P was divided, where the San Carlos was divided. Is that correct?
So the San Carlos is a very dense area as far as student population goes, whereas Estero and Benita are, it's a larger retirement population, less student. In the plans one through three, Q, as it was, was not very diverse, and so we expanded that to include the Estero area. And the northern boundary of Q in Draft Plan Four is very much in line with the municipal boundary of Estero, and that was to try to address concerns of diversity, kind of going back to what Dr. Atkins said. We're doing our best to draw the lines in these plans to address diversity, but it will be very much policy. And just a reminder that behind each one of those student dots, it's not just a dot on the map. We have the information with regards to their test scores and ethnicity and things like that. So we have all that information, and we have not been ignoring that through this process.
Thank you, Courtney. I just wanted you to explain what you had explained to me.
David, I don't know if you had anything to add.
And thank you.
One other thing I want to comment on, and I agree with you. When we do these PowerPoints or presentations, and I've been making maps for over 25 years, it's hard to put a lot of information on one slide. That's why we made different levels of maps. When you go on the website, you have a chance to print out these eight and a half by 11 maps, but you also have the ability to pull up one of those wall maps, we call them, four feet by three feet. You see all the schools, you see the capacities of the schools, you see more streets on there. Those are the ones that parents are walking up to. And when you look at those maps, there's other things. You mentioned the size of P or Q, depending on what map you look at. There's other important geographic things to consider. The airport, for example, covers a large footprint, and it might look like on a map it's a large geographic area, but you have to look if it's wetlands, if there's an airport or things like that. So it's not just because it's large means there's a lot of kids or not that many. You have to look at what's in the zone itself. So that's another thing I just wanted to point out as well.
I think I'd add...
Thank you. We're really running quite a bit over, so...
Ms. Vaughn, I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see.
Are we going to bring this to most, if not all, of our advisory committees?
That is the plan.
Good. Thank you. That's it.
Right. So we are running a little bit over, so I recommend that any board member that has additional questions, send them directly to Ms. Gordon. Okay, so...
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes. Oh, is this Ms. Fisher?
Yes, yes. I've been on for a little bit. I'll catch up later. I just wanted to comment that I'm hoping that this evening, while we're in meeting and the people are meeting here in the West Zone at the Cape Coral High School, that there'll be a staff member that can catch me up on what happens there.
That was another unfortunate planning... Yeah, for planning that it was on a board night, so none of us could be there. But thank you so much. And we're moving now to executive services, and we're going to be taking a look at three different policies, and we have three different sets of presenters. So Dr. Pruitt and Mr. Rothenberg, you're up.
Sorry about that. I'll get it right eventually. Good afternoon. There are a couple of different policies that I know I was asked to speak about today. The first is some revisions to the guest teacher policy. And really, the thing to note with that is that we're formalizing some of the language that is already captured in the memorandum of understanding that was ratified and board-approved by support staff earlier this year. And that really serves just to clarify some of the existing language that was in the policy and what it is that we're doing in order to meet the needs of schools for guest teachers, given COVID and shortages in kind of the emergency situation that we're in.
Okay, so has everybody had a chance to take a look at the guest teacher policy? Let's go ahead and start with the people who are on the phone. Ms. Fisher, did you have comments on that one?
No, I read it, and I think it's... I'm sorry, but are you hearing this echo?
Mm-mm.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask about Section 2, Area C, being currently employed by the district as an instructional paraprofessional, et cetera. Does that negate the requirement for a 60-hour of college credit?
Yes, that does.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Givinelli? Any questions or comments?
I have none. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gittens, I think, had a question?
I just wanted to say thank you for adding 2D. We did speak about that as to when we have a critical need, is there any possibility? The only concern, not concern, but question I have about it is, as determined by the superintendent or superintendent designated, how do we stay out of hot water in deciding who that is? And that may be Dr. Pruitt.
That would just be anyone that is, if they were under investigation or something along those lines, that would be the... If they're in the school and they're in good standing and they're in that position, they're eligible.
So D actually kind of goes along with C. Are we talking about an employee that is a para or a human resource or something like that? Goes along with D that it can be.
Right.
So you may want to clarify that, because when I read it, I thought anybody, you know, you walk in and it's like, you look like you can do it, you know, go ahead. So just to clarify it a little...
Yeah, the only people that can go outside of the requirements for this board policy are those people that are instructional paraprofessionals that are in good standing.
Okay, so then I would clarify that with D, even to make it C1 or something?
Okay.
Okay? Just a suggestion.
I agree.
Okay, who else has a question or comment? Board members? Yeah, and I'm going to say, echo what was said, because that's how I read it as well. And so to clarify in C, an instructional paraprofessional. So scenario, there's a teacher who is absent, and he or she normally has an instructional This would allow that paraprofessional to be a substitute, and that paraprofessional would not get more additional substitute pay, but is that...
Well, each scenario would be looked at differently. What I'm going to say to you is, that's possible, but, for example, if it's a life skills classroom, we wouldn't leave that para in there by themselves. We would want to have, leave that para and then maybe ask another para to come in, and then they might be the one serving as the guest teacher, because we certainly wouldn't want to, you know, put them in a position... You know, there's potentially emergency situations where that might happen, but the intent is... And that's why we also, we've advised the principals, if it's a paraprofessional that's a one-on-one, we don't want that para pulled away from that one student. You know what I mean? So, and we're relying on principals to use their, you know, their judgment when they're asking people to cover.
Okay, if you look at the, if you would break down the hourly rate of an average instructional paraprofessional, I'm assuming it will be higher than an hourly rate for a sub all day?
Not necessarily.
So in that case, the para takes on the role of a sub all day, but gets less compensation. Would that, might that be true?
No, they would get additional compensation for taking on that responsibility.
Okay, and is that... I've been focused on the red. Is that spelled out somewhere? Is that in a Spalk contract? I think that's...
It's in the memorandum of understanding with Spalk.
Okay, so...
And I believe we also put it in the language to be ratified.
I don't know if we did or not.
Okay. Well, it's in the memorandum of understanding with Spalk.
Okay, and I think that's an important consideration, because let's face it, our guest teachers don't get paid enough, nor do our paraprofessionals. And even if it's $5 a day more for standing in all day as the teacher in that room, I think it should be really, it wouldn't be in the policy, but it needs to be very clearly stated, and I think in the schools, because wouldn't it be the schools that record the extra pay?
Correct.
And so, you know, I remember years ago at Estero, sometimes we were asked to fill in as a teacher, you know, oh, it's an emergency and we need to go fill in. What was happening is that some of the teachers just filled in, and they never filled out the paperwork that went through it. And, you know, me being the veteran teacher, I'd say, what? You just went in there? And we're not talking about doing it for a friend. We're talking...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay. So I think there needs to be something very, very specific, so those kinds of things do not happen, and if there is some additional paperwork, that it's made very clear.
Yeah, hopefully we have, and that the secretary to the principals are the ones that are going to be doing that for us. But, you know, it is important that everybody get compensated appropriately.
Right. But my point is, where does it say that besides the MOU? And does it need to be...
In the communication that we sent out to principals. I don't have it handy with me right here, because we actually did start this a while ago with your permission. So, but yeah, I mean, it was discussed at a principal meeting, probably more than one, actually, and then we sent out just our kind of talking points and, if you will.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm being totally honest.
Yep.
It's not going to happen in every case unless, you know, the paras know that too.
Right.
And they have to volunteer.
Yeah, and to Mr. Rothenberg's point, they can't be told to do it. They have to, they have to be... We're with teachers. If we're in an emergency, you know, the language is in the contract to rotate through, but with the paras, they have to be willing and they have to volunteer.
Anybody else have questions, comments? Great. Thank you.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, you made me think a little more. What exactly are guest teachers being paid now? Now?
I don't have the salary schedule with me, so I'm not sure what it is right now, but I'm sure we can look it up and let you know here shortly.
And when was the last, and can we find out, when was the last time they had an increase?
Exactly. I do know that last year, we again reviewed their pay, and we were the highest-paying district for guest teachers of our, like, the top, I think, 18 districts. They had the highest pay.
Oh, could we have that information?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on this guest teacher policy?
Yeah, but Madam Chair, I do want board consensus to make sure that we can move forward with finalization, moving this towards the formal rulemaking process.
Okay. Who will give consensus to approve this to be moved along? All right, I'm seeing...
I thought we were not doing this anymore?
Yeah, and let me remind you on what we decided. We decided that the sideways thumb, as they do in the bargaining, means, yes, I can live with it. This is yes, definitely. This is, yeah, okay. And this is a no.
And the sideways thumb will be considered a yes.
Yes, it will be considered a yes.
Okay. Can I ask a question then? I'm not comfortable until the change is made that we discussed, so...
Yeah, my understanding was...
I guess I'm going to go no.
Well, my understanding was... Yeah, my understanding was, well, my understanding was moving forward in the process means we make the changes you're requesting and then we come back to the next reading, you would let us know if you approve that or not. Like, this is the initial and then.
Come back to us at an action meeting.
So, the verbiage is moving forward with this process?
Yep.
Okay.
So, where are we again? One more time? And ladies on the phone?
Yes, thumbs up.
Thumbs up? Okay. So, it's unanimous, unanimous, I guess. Ms. Jivinelli, are you a thumbs up? Okay. Unanimous on it.
Yes.
Okay. Are you guys doing the presentation also, uh, on the next one? You said you're doing a couple of these.
Yeah, what's the?
Is Mr. Lloyd here? Mr. Lloyd's here.
I don't have the order because we can't see it up there, so I.
Yeah, we have managerial discipline guidelines for transportation employees and then policy 2.34 religious expression.
All right. So, um, I'll give just a, a quick overview because this is another one that, um, involved a lot of, uh, communication back and forth with Spalk since obviously it impacts, um, employees in transportation. The majority of the changes are formatting and so you'll see a lot of red line on there, but there's just a, a few key parts that are, are being updated. Um, the, the policy, I don't think, has been, um, updated in about four years and so there have been some changes in state law around use of cell phones while operating a motor vehicle and some other issues that have, um, come up through the Transportation Labor Management Committee, which is made up of both supervisors and administrators from transportation as well as the, the stewards for each of the compounds. And they've reviewed this and, and have given it their blessing. Um, the, the penalties that are, are listed, those are recommendations and, and again, that's after you have a due process hearing and after, uh, in most cases, the union has had the opportunity to provide representation and to advocate on behalf of their, uh, their members. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Lloyd who can give you a couple of the highlights.
Hey, Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you very much. And as Mr. Rothenberg said, it really is a lot of formatting. Uh, first time I got it, I saw the red print and said, oh my goodness, we're revamping everything. But this was originally adopted in 2012. It was last revised in 2016, so it's been a few years. There are additions, but there really, there's nothing new. These are MOUs that we've been using. We've worked with Labor Management and Spalk to come through these. So aside from the, um, verbiage that has been changed, uh, number five on the bottom of, or the top of page three, if you have it in front of you, uh, this is being added. It has to do with failure to submit accurate documentation for time reporting purposes or submission of unauthorized hours. So this is something that we have had in place. First-time offenses, three days out-of-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. Without pay.
Were you ever a teacher?
And second is termination, um, depending on, uh, the degree of severity. There's also an option there for a referral to law enforcement. So while that's been in place for the last year or so, it is being incorporated, uh, this time into the new managerial guidelines. If you want to go to the, to the bottom of that page, page three, we are adding misuse of emergency channel. Doesn't have, happen often, but it does fall under the radio communication. Top of page four, um, and this goes and refers back to what Mr. Rothenberg said about cellphone, about the legalities of the use of the cell phones. This one here, uh, the use of the personal electronic devices absolutely has to do with the safety of our kids, you know? We don't want to have any tolerance with that. Um, so we're looking at those offenses there. If you look at, uh, the bottom half of page four, we have added physical abuse to the verbal abuse. Again, this truly isn't anything new in the department. What's new is that we're actually incorporating it now after four years into the actual guideline portions. And the last change is on the back page, page eight of eight, has to do with failure to check the school bus after each, um, AM and PM route. And really, that's always been in there. What we have changed is actually the guidelines to the right and we're making, um, a discrimination between, uh, unsupervised and unsupervised and unattended. And that's where those changes have come about. Any questions?
Got questions? Ms. Get, Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Jordan.
Okay. On page one, um, the fact that you added at line number one, line 13, uh, recommended discipline. And yet on line eight, it is guidelines for discipline. Um, it, I don't know, the recommended kind of leaves me hanging out there. So are we going, is it the discipline or is it, uh, recommend? You know what I'm saying? Someone could.
These are just guidelines. Every case, every incident that occurs in transportation has its own stories. There, there's always, um, circumstances that we have to listen to and it's a due process. It's a progressive discipline. We call the employee in, we actually listen to it. And like I said, these are just guidelines. There are times, um, obviously we can't go more severe and I hate using punishment, penalty, severe, but there are such, uh, situations where it might call for a, uh, written reprimand. However, I last spoke to you about it nine months ago. When I talked to you, you were running late, you didn't bring your uniform shirt in. I might just document you again as a warning. It's not necessarily, hey, I'm giving you, I talked to you in September, this is May, now I'm giving you a written reprimand. It, it's just guidelines, but like I said, senior administrators, supervisors have to have the flexibility to look at each case individually.
And, and I, and I understand that. And, and my only suggestion would be then to kind of replicate what's in the title in that line and say recommended guidelines for discipline.
Okay.
Because it's just saying what's in the title. Uh, I'm, I'm, it's, you know, would open us up for a bunch of stuff if somebody says, well, it was only recommended, so I didn't have to do that.
Yeah.
So if you say the recommended guidelines, it matches the title.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I was, I, I think I found it. No, I was looking at number two and I, I didn't see, um, for the improper utilization of bus keys. And it says, uh, first offense. I didn't see anything across from there, but I, I see that it's up there on the top now.
Yeah, it's a written reprimand. And like I said, with all the red, very few have been changed.
Right.
They all seem to be the standard, warning, written reprimand, suspension, termination. We, we kind of, the progressive discipline.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Fisher, questions, comments? Ms. Jivinelli, questions, comments?
I have no further questions or comments.
What about you, Ms. Jivinelli?
Okay, yeah, I guess I muted. Um, the only questions that I have, this is just for, um, employees or business, um, also go for the managers and as well. Got the discipline.
These guidelines across the board. So yes, for supervisors, all employees. So, if you're looking at verbal abuse, yes. And actually, to be perfectly honest, I would hold my supervisors to a higher standard than that, but yes, these guidelines would go for all the employees in transportation.
Great. That's why I wanted to make sure that this is for all employees. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
Can I ask then if it's for all employees, do you really need to say managerial? I mean, I, I know I'm nitpicking, but if it's guidelines for discipline of transportation employees, that's basically what it is.
I think managerial. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, just, I mean, to give you a look.
I agree with that actually because that's what threw me off.
I think it really just gets to the history of this, which, you know, which it, it originally, they were put in place years ago, um, literally, uh, very early in my tenure, believe it or not, so before all you all, and, and it was to provide a transportation manager's guidance in terms of how they were going to, uh, assign consequences. So that's the genesis of this document back in probably 2003 or '04 possibly. And so that's where the managerial came in because they were guidelines for a manager to, when they were disciplined employees.
And, and so it could be managerial, uh, Mr. Lloyd as manager of his employees, or it could be, um, Dr. Savage as managerial of Mr. Lloyd. So, it's whoever the manager is of the, whatever the transportation employee, whatever role they serve in transportation, this is a guideline for the manager of those employee, whatever their place is in transportation.
And like, like now, I mean, that was, those were ones that we hammered out with the, the association with Spalk was heavily involved at that time. I know Suzanne Rudd, for example, if you remember, so.
But I guess the, the question is, are there guidelines for, you know, everyone in transportation? And, and Mr. Lloyd said that it covers the supervisors and everybody else.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's just that, you know, with the word managerial, it makes it sound like they are exempt from this.
Well, as I said, that, you know, yeah, whatever you want to do.
Right.
The purpose of the document was for guidance for managers in terms of how to assign consequences. That's why they're called managerial guidelines.
Right. Yeah. Okay. And I think it's important that Spalk was, you know, and it, it says right there, Support Personnel Association, Safe Driver Plan. Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And we're moving on to one more policy.
Same question though, Madam Chair. I do need board consensus to move this forward.
Oh, that's right. You know what? As soon as I saw you lean in to the microphone, I'm like, all right. May I have board consensus on continuing with, uh, moving ahead?
And before you do that, I just want to make sure I have clarification that, um, that one sentence, which is line 13, you, you want it changed to recommended guidelines versus discipline?
Well, I didn't say take out the discipline. I'm just saying it should mirror what the title is, recommended guidelines for discipline. Um, I, I was just thinking the word guidelines should be in there.
Which, which line?
Line 13.
You want it to say recommended discipline guidelines?
That's fine.
Okay. So with that change?
With that change, uh, do we have consensus to move this ahead? Um, Ms. Ju, uh, Ms. Jivinelli? Ms. Fisher? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thumbs up.
Okay. Unanimous. And we move on to yet one more policy on religious expression. And this is, um, presented by, um, Mrs. Kathy Dupree Bruno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is based on Florida statute 1,002.206. This is a statute that discusses religious expression in public schools and it's, um, very clear with regards to students and students being able to, um, have their religious expressions. The statute required the DOE to draft a model policy. That policy was drafted and the statute requires all districts to adopt that model policy.
What questions and comments? I hope, hopefully you've had a chance to read through this. Ms. Gittens?
So this is, uh, a new policy current, I mean, with the DOE, I know this has been the, the standard for a long time that it had to be student-led and all that. So this is just qualifying that in a policy that we have, taking it from DOE, correct?
And making us in compliant with the statutory requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Jordan?
Uh, my question would be the, um, what was it? Dress code. So if we have a dress code at our school and if you go down to, uh, religious clothing, jewelry, accessory, and the students may wear clothing, so how does that go with our dress? Who, who's higher, the dress code or the statute?
The statute.
So if we have a school that has uniforms and a child decides not to wear that uniform because they're wanting to wear something else, then they are permitted to do so?
I think this is something that's a case-by-case basis. If something like that should happen, um, but this is, um, I don't, I don't know if anything like this has happened in the past, but if something like this does happen, this will be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. I mean, we do have to be in comportment with the statute. I'm sure the parents will be offered some alternatives.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Ms. Jivinelli? Uh, you, you said you're good with it? Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Thumbs up.
Okay. Which brings me to, finally got it. Approval to move ahead with this? Okay? Unanimous.
It's two hours. Do you want to give people a break before we move on?
Oh, okay. I've been asked, this might be a great time to take a little break before public comment. So, um, let's do a five-minute break. It's 3:02. We will reconvene at 3:07. Okay? Five minutes.
In order to develop this scope of work, we had several conversations with the board attorney. We also met with sub-administration at Cypress Lake High School as well as the, the complainants to understand their concerns and have drafted this scope of work.
Sorry, I feel like I'm in Peanuts classroom. Like I can't hear anything you're saying.
Yeah, I thought it sounded a little, maybe is the microphone placed?
It's on, I think.
I could speak closer. Is this better?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, thank you.
My apologies. Okay, so we developed the scope of work after having several conversations with the board attorney. We also met with some staff from Cypress Lake High School as well as some parents with some specific concerns. We developed this after, in, at the request of the board attorney. And what we have laid out here after those discussions and after the requests from the board attorney was really two separate work streams to address some of the concerns and emotion of the board at the November 17th meeting. The first work stream focuses on review of some specific concerns at the Cypress, with the Cypress Lake High School Athletic Booster Club. And the second work stream deals more specifically with a more general internal audit of cooperative organizations throughout the district. So each of the work streams in the, the draft statement of work here really lay out a specific approach and have some specific, again, proposed approaches and how we would address the concerns that we heard in the conversations that we've had to this point. So would the board like for me to walk through these? I don't know. I don't want to repeat anything if you guys have already had a chance to review them or I'm certainly happy to walk through the specific approach as well.
So what is your, how many, my consensus would like Mr. Blondell to walk through?
I think he, I think he should.
My consensus, who wants him to walk through? And who would rather?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I would appreciate a little overview on that.
Okay. Ms. Jivinelli?
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three, four, at least four of us. So five, yeah. Would you do a brief, yeah?
Yes.
A walkthrough. Thank you.
So for work stream number one, as related, as mentioned previously, it's related specifically to some concerns with the Cypress Lake High School Athletic Booster Club. What we would propose to do there would be to conduct some interviews, additional interviews. Again, we had some preliminary discussions just to kind of understand some of the concerns and enough to develop this scope, but we may want to do some additional interviews with specific people with access to facts and other documentation. We would also review relevant statutes, board policy, and then the guidelines for cooperative organizations documents. It is really one of the governing documents for the cooperative organizations. And then as we get specifically into the, the scope, we've got it broken out into three areas, three areas of concern. One would be the, the governance of the overall Athletic Booster Club. And we would do some testing to, to, of general governance and reporting to the school and reporting to the district and the board. The second area is related to the use of, or inappropriate use, rather, of booster funds where we would test some disbursements from the booster fund to assess whether or not there was proper support and approval for those disbursements as well as the club's general maintenance of accurate accounting records. And then the third area was related to the school and the booster club's process for handling complaints and requests for information. And so that's really the, the main approach there. It's an independent assessment as we were asked to provide, related again with some, there is some overlap obviously with some, the staff auditor report that was provided, but these are, again, we understand just some additional concerns and specific concerns that we'd heard that were still in place. The second work stream, as we see it, is really more a, a typical standard internal audit approach to assessing the booster organization and the governance of booster organizations across the district. And so what we've laid out there is really more similarly aligned to a standard internal audit where we would conduct walkthroughs to understand the process for the district's administration, understand what kind of training is provided to organizations and to principals, understand other procedural documents, reference documents that are available to those individuals, and how communication channels are set up. And then we would do some detailed testing of organizations from across the district with representation from different types of schools, elementary, middle, high schools, and then test for compliance with the, the district's cooperative organization guidelines So the bullets there, in this, the sub-bullets there on the third bullet really lists out the specific components of the cooperative organizations document that we would be testing against. And then from there, we would combine these into a report with some recommendations for process improvement, either specifically related to the booster club, the Cypress Lake High School Booster Club, or more general, general or recommendations for process and control improvement related to more general oversight of, of cooperative organizations.
What questions does the board have on, on any of this that Mr. Blondell just went over? Ms. Gittens?
I would like to hear from our attorney, Mr. Dupree Bruno, as to her thoughts on moving forward.
I think that the SOW that was created appropriately reflects, based on the discussions that I had with the board auditor, the concerns and the allegations.
The concerns and what? I didn't hear the last part.
The allegations that were raised.
May I have a five-minute recess, please? I, I've been told that when I need to consult with the attorney on something that I should ask for a five-minute recess. And so may I have a five-minute recess, please?
I'm unfamiliar with that. Mr. Dupree Bruno, is that?
If, if Ms. Patrica would like to talk to me on an individual one-on-one briefing, I'm happy to do so.
So anybody oppose it?
Sorry.
So we'll give you, all right, we're, we are running a little bit late, but I think this is super important. So let's say it's 3:20. At 3:25, we will reconvene. All right. So Mrs. Patrica, did you want to make a comment or ask a question?
I would like to hear the conversation develop with my colleagues and then I'll jump in when I think it's appropriate.
Okay. So we're open for comments and questions. Ms. Fisher?
Regarding work stream two, is there any evidence of internal, recent internal audit on booster clubs from the district level?
Not that we're aware of.
So I'll, I'll take that if I can. My name is Laura. I'm a director with RSM. I work 100% in the public sector, very closely with Clara and Matt here. And I have quite a bit of experience in this related topic. So they've brought me into the team before you today and I'm happy to be here in working with them to help develop this scope. You know, part of our function as your internal auditors is to think about risk and systemic risk. So when we've become aware of potentially an issue at a booster club, we're thinking district-wide. Is there a possibility that this could exist elsewhere? Or are there other areas of risk related to cooperative organizations that the board may want us to take a look at since we're in this area and touching this subject?
Ms. Fisher, are you muted? Would you mute, please? Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. And so the purpose of work stream two is really to finish the question, if you will. Work stream one answers the question that the board had, I think, about the specific concerns or areas of focus related to that one particular high school. And work stream two really helps And work stream two really helps you to get that district-wide picture where we can look at the process district-wide. How is the district set up to monitor and support their cooperative organizations with proper internal controls and checks and balances in place?
Does that answer your question? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, yes, that does answer my question. Thank you for that.
Ms. Gittens?
So, are we, is our charge today to decide on one work stream or the other? Or is it a continuous process? I'm not quite sure which way we're, what we're charged to do.
Yes, ma'am. I think, I think the options are in your hands. This is a product of the conversations that we've had with the board attorney and the high school complainants, as well as school administration, plus our own professional experience where we think we should be based on what we heard, the board's discussion at the prior board meeting. That's, that's what we are recommending that we do to you all today. If you have other thoughts or questions or concerns and you want to discuss it a little bit more and have us revamp the scope of work to address any additional comments that you may have or other things to consider, we're happy to take that feedback and provide you an updated statement of work at your next opportunity.
Okay. Then, I would like to say I would definitely support work stream two district-wide because of other cooperative, we have no idea if we're losing money with other groups or other organizations. And since we haven't had this in the past, it, to me, is a good time to just look into this, add our policies and procedure changes as necessary, and just start out on a good foot.
Okay. Other? Other comments? Ms. Jordan?
Yes. I know we've talked about this already. I've had conversations with RSM, and two has been issued to me because of the cost, because no one's speaking about the cost of any of these items. So, when we're looking at the first one, hopefully by doing the first one, we're going to come up with some, check some balances on that, as well as organizational control and getting the information that we may need to use for policies and looking at others without having to go through the whole, what is it, $40,000? Because the first one is 25, which hasn't been mentioned. But I think we need to definitely look at that as far as, you know, the money that we're spending. And hopefully that we, based on work stream one, we get the information needed to help us with making, ensuring that all the others are following suit.
If I may add to that, that's an excellent point, Ms. Jordan. I think that you will get some recommendations and some valuable information from work stream one, and it will be specific to that particular booster club. If the board is interested in taking a look district-wide to see if there's anything we don't know yet, any risks that haven't come before you yet, almost like a preemptive, let's get ahead of this now type of audit, that's the purpose of work stream two, and there may be additional recommendations or items to uncover that may not be apparent if we do work stream one, certainly the board's decision.
Thank you, Laura. Yes.
What is the, do we know the dollar amount involved, I mean, besides reviewing and all of that? Do we know a dollar amount involved with the situation concerning the one situation right now? Is there, you know, a number that, that we are aware of that is, you know, missing or is what?
What, so, are you asking whether or not if we know there, can confirm that there were funds missing?
Right. And basically, what I'm getting at is that if we spend, if we find out that there was, you know, 35,000 of funds misappropriated or something, then if we spend the 40, you know, to find out, is that happening anywhere else? Then, we basically are saving ourselves money in the long run. And that's, that's what I'm getting at. The 25,000 is just for this current case, and it is not for, you know, is this happening anywhere else? And it's not for putting together, I guess, getting the information to put together a comprehensive policy that will cover everything.
So, I think the question, Mr. Blondell, is whether or not you can advise the board in terms of cost-effectiveness.
Would you like me to take that? Matt? Okay. It's hard to tell in masks sometimes, so I apologize for the delay. We certainly want to be cost-effective, and in considering how we put together this scope of work for you all, typically, an internal audit of this size, a work stream number two would be about $50,000. But we do believe that we can learn about the district-wide processes and procedures a little bit through work stream one. So, the advantage of doing them simultaneously is that we can discount those fees a little bit for work stream two, because we will have a little bit of scales of economy that we can take advantage of there.
Okay. And let me remind ladies on the phone, when you're not speaking, please mute. Thank you.
And I have a question to the auditors. In reviewing work stream one, and you come up with some general recommendations, let's say it's recommendations for training in terms of governance and training with regards to bookkeeping, that kind of would be a little bit of a catch-all that can be applied across the district?
Yes. I do think that we will be able to provide some recommendations that will be helpful district-wide. Again, I really think that the, the purpose of us recommending work stream two is what don't we know yet, what might have happened elsewhere that we aren't aware of yet that we could capture.
Is, okay, so, I'm thinking that work stream one can exist without number two, but not vice versa, right?
I think they could be independent in this...
Can number two be independent of number one?
It could be, yes, ma'am. We would rework the scope of work, the statement of work, to provide back to you and parcel out as, as directed by the board.
And would it remain at the same cost if we did just one instead of both?
I think we would have to consider the timing of when we do work stream two. If it's several years subsequent, there could be outdated information, and we may have to revisit in its entirety, as opposed to at the same time, learning the same things at the same time.
Okay. Well, I'm going to give my opinion on this. It's been my experience with school districts, and I'm not specifically talking about this one, but just during my career, that if something is happening at one school, the odds have amplified greatly that there are similar issues at, at other schools that need to be looked at. And, you know, it's, the argument could be made, well, this is booster club money, it's not specifically taxpayer money, that, that sort of thing. But, let's face it, we rely on the booster clubs to provide so much for our students that we just can't give. It's the, sometimes it's not even the extra things, it's things that, that the students really, really need. And so, you know, if, if we, as a district, kind of have a big, bad, ugly mark, you know, like a blotch on, on our booster clubs and the different organizations within the district that support our students, that's, that's not going to bode well for us in, in terms of reputation, and, and it's not going to bode well in terms of people willing to, not just donate, but willing to serve. Because we really rely in our, in our schools with volunteers, and volunteers that feel like they're well-supported by everybody in the school and in the school district. So, you know, I'm not sure at this point, this is my personal opinion, on the work stream one. It just depends what turns out with the negotiations that we're doing right now. But, to me, it's really important for those reasons that we do take a look across the board at all of our schools, even though it seems costly now. I think there are reports, aren't there, Dr. Atkins, reports that have to be done in the school, that they have to record their volunteers and then the amount that that's worth, right?
Yes.
So, if we start getting a bad reputation because this booster club or that is not working, or the people are disgruntled because the system isn't working, we are losing money from that point of view. So, that's, I think, an important consideration. Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Okay. In speaking with the attorney, Prebreno, I think you explained to me that booster clubs are a separate entity. They are not under our jurisdiction. So, legally, it's like we have an outside agency that is working within our property and our domain. What is our jurisdiction over them, if there is any, in letting someone from outside come in and do business in our...
That's a very, that's a very good question. So, the statute discusses your oversight of booster clubs primarily for the funding purposes. Booster clubs are normally a 501(c)(3) organization, which is a completely separate entity from the school board. However, they are doing fundraising using your school's name on your school property, or maybe not on your school property, but doing the fundraising in the name of the school. So, that's how you are tied in to ensure that the financials are done properly. And you do have a board policy 4.32, which discusses that. In addition, there is a cooperative organization guidelines that booster clubs are supposed to follow, which require certain documentation, certain reporting that the district has.
So, if the booster club that is working with one of our schools does something, you know, out of line, do, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, is there a, you know, the head of the booster clubs or whatever, who do we go to for that, you know, to, to take care of that situation?
Well, there's a relationship between the school administration and the booster club, which pursuant to...
Each individual one, right?
Each individual club.
But each individual club is operating under the 501(c)(3) of booster clubs as a whole?
No, 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 no. They're individual organizations. And they're affiliated with whichever school.
Okay. Then, I don't know. To me, it's maybe we need to look at that policy and see, you know, where does our responsibility end and...
Your responsibility is because they're fundraising using your school's name. You're responsible to ensure the financial fiduciary responsibilities, to make sure that they're operating appropriately from a financial standpoint and abiding by the guidelines that you already have in your cooperative agreement.
Ms. Jordan had a...
I was just going to ask as well. So, then, our, the district auditor would be the one who oversees that, like they do the, the office bookkeepers? Is that correct or, no? Dr. Atkins?
Uh-uh.
It's, it's a little different, because your internal accounts are internal and are being audited internally. The booster clubs don't have that same level of responsibility. And I'm going to ask Matt or one of the RSM people to explain that a little bit further in terms of the responsibilities and the guidelines.
Sure.
In terms of auditing.
Are you about to, Matt? Go ahead.
I was just going to say that, as far as we understand, the auditing of the internal accounts at the school, which is not...
Is different.
Is different, and that's handled by the district's internal auditor. And he, he provides reports, or that office provides reports on an annual basis. What I believe we're talking about here is a separate fund, a separate accounting, that during a dissolution of it, did end up transferring, I believe, to the district's internal accounts at the school, or that school's internal accounts, rather. So, what we're talking about is, is a separate accounting, and it's a separate fund that's really outside the purview of the account, the audits of the internal accounts.
These entities are, it's like a group of parents, you know, that come together, and they're going to fundraise on behalf of this, of the, the school which they, you know, which they're representing, but they are outside, an outside entity. So, if you're doing an internal audit, you know, that's where if the school has done some fundraising, or if you have, the school uses, let's say, money that they raised from vending machines, or you have dollars that are in a school's internal accounts, the internal auditor does that report on an annual basis, and then you, that, of course, is provided to us, and, and usually, there's a, there's typically a conference with the principal on, you know, the accounting practices of that school and the bookkeeper and how the internal accounts were handled. Example would be, a lot of schools do dances, you know, as a, as a fundraiser. So, there's a lot of strict guidelines on how you have to sell tickets to a dance, and you have to have literally every student's name accounted for and with each ticket. And so, all of that gets turned into our internal accounts, and that's part of what, what gets audited. A band booster may not be affiliated at all. It may be a group of parents that, that forms a 503(c), and, and they fundraise on behalf, but that, that's not, those are dollars that are outside the internal accounts unless there's been a dissolutionment, as there was in this particular case.
So, basically, then, the booster clubs are operating at the consent of the district in our schools? But we do not have specific jurisdiction over what they do? I mean...
So, we do have board policy that discusses it, and we also have the cooperative organization guidelines, which specifically says if you are going to be a club operating in our schools, here are some guidelines that must be followed. So, by virtue of them operating in the schools, they have agreed to these guidelines.
So, the, the investigation is to find out if they follow the guidelines?
Well, I believe that pursuant to the SOW that was created after discussing with all of the parties that were involved, trying to figure out what are the allegations, what are the issues, and that's what, if my, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the basis of the investigation or the audit.
Okay. Board members, comments? Dr. Atkins, do we currently have a standardized set of guidelines that would be distributed to every school for them to use with, I'm guessing, are the PTAs or PTOs under this as well, right? So, I'm assuming that all schools have at least one booster or PTA group. Do we currently have a standardized set of guidelines?
Actually, as a result of this, they, Mr. LaRosa did work with staff to create a cooperative organizational manual that's been created and made available to all schools and booster club organizations. And there is...
So, since, within the past several months, in other words?
That's correct.
Okay. We seen that? This board?
Yeah. I don't believe this board has seen that, because, again, like I said, it was just, it really, having this occur, you know, and I think, you know, Mr. LaRosa had indicated, and I had communicated to you all, that this isn't the first of these booster organizations. I think this is the third one since his tenure, in his current position, that he has had to walk through a dissolutionment because of concerns regarding how they do their... to walk through a dissolutionment because of concerns regarding how they do their finances. So I think this, this has given us as a district, just kind of put us on notice, that we really do believe we need to not only develop a manual, distribute a manual, but Mr. LaRosa is involved as well in, in terms of working to provide some training to our schools.
I was just going to ask that. Is the training part of, you know, we can distribute, but would there be, is there training as well?
Yes. Yes. And, and that would be in conjunction with, our legal department would help facilitate that training with, of course, auditing and Mr. LaRosa.
Okay. And I think from my point of view, it would be helpful for us as Board members to, to see that. Is there any, is there anybody who has not made a comment or asked a question yet before we continue with this? And I think... Oh, that's right. You reserved yours, Mrs. Patrica. Okay. Mrs. Givenelli and then Mrs. Patrica.
I will, Mr. Patrica, thank you. So...
Dr. Decimore sent me something. I just want to make sure I'm accurate in what I'm providing. She's, the cooperative organization manual we have had for some time. But I know the training component and the revision of that manual is what is being, has been worked on recently.
So it wasn't revised? It was, it's one that we've had for a while?
Had for a while, yeah.
And we're adding training?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Patrica.
So I think what Dr. Atkins just said is kind of how I'm approaching this. It's funny, Ms. Jordan, you mentioned $65,000. $65,000 has been tattooed to the inside of my eyeballs since I read this SOW. I cannot fathom spending $65,000, $25,000, or $40,000 on non-taxpayer dollars. This is, this is, I feel like I'm in altering, in an alternate universe to a certain extent. As I look at work stream number one, RSM will test to determine whether appropriate approval was given for disbursements. We know that from our internal audit. We have the answer to that question from our internal audit. RSM will test for accurate accounting records. We have the answer to that from our internal audit. RSM will test to determine whether disbursements were for appropriate business purposes. We have that from our internal audit. Everything that's being proposed to be done in work stream number one, we already have the answers to those issues in, in the internal audit that has already been conducted and we've already paid for with our human resource dollars here in the district. I don't see the point in spending another $25,000 to get the same results. I do think that, to a certain extent, what we're experiencing here is what we've experienced since I've been on the Board and probably we've been experiencing for the past decade or so, which is growing pains. We are becoming bigger. We need more standardized processes when it comes to things like this. I believe staff is now on notice. Rather than spend $40,000 on recommendations when we already know that there are issues, I would like to give Dr. Atkins and his staff a period of time to put together some processes, rely on Mr. LaRosa as he walks in the room, rely on his network of athletic director experts across the state, rely on Mr. Simpson and his network of principal, high school principal experts across the state. Identify best practices, bring that back to the Board. And if at that point, we're not happy with how the superintendent and, and his staff are going to approach a uniform system of training and record-keeping for clubs like this, then we can talk about spending $40,000. But we already have a lot of people working for us, and I'm sorry to ask you to put in more hours. Don't see the point in spending all this money on something that we already have the staff in-house to accomplish for us. Those are my comments for now. The only, the only other thing I will say, if I may, is I agree with you, Ms. Vaughn. If something's happening at one school, it is likely happening at all schools. And that's why I believe staff needs to be given a period of time. Mr. Blondell mentioned that work stream number two would be more of a typical standard internal audit approach. They, they did, RSM did, a risk assessment for us. These cooperative organizations were not amongst the top 10 issues in terms of potential risks to the district. So again, why, why are we taking resources at a time when, I don't know if you're as nervous as I am about what's going to come out of Tallahassee in terms of a budget in February and March? We talk all the time at the table about creating new positions and what that does and how that takes money away from teachers. That's got, that's got to be done here as well. $65,000, $40,000, $25,000, a lot of money for what we can already do right here in the district. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Okay. Other reactions? All right, go ahead and...
Is it appropriate for me to provide some color?
Sure.
I think those were excellent comments, Ms. Patrica, and I thank you for those. I think probably I would like to talk a little bit about expectations with you all, which is what you touched on in the beginning of your statement there. If we are to come in and take a look at work stream number one, yes, there has been an internal audit performed internally already. It is likely that we may have some very similar findings. I think the difference is that the Board had asked for an independent investigation from a firm outside of the district, and, and that is what we can provide to you if those are your wishes for us to continue. In terms of the internal audit, work stream number two, I think that timing is everything. And to your point, if district staff is working on best practices and updated policies and procedures and training, the timing for our audit could be after implementation so that the Board knows, are the new policies and procedures and best practices working the way that you all intended for them to work? Excellent points.
As, as we talk about dollars, we also have to remember that staff time equals dollars. And time that staff spends on this is time where they can't, or they have less time to work on, on some other issues. I see that as a reason, I'm, I'm not convinced about work street, stream one. I think that depends on what occurs with what's going on now in terms of negotiations, investigation. But I see a lot of things here that would take, for us as a staff, would take staff members away from their more day-to-day duties, number one. Number two, I'm very, very concerned about our reputation and the fact that we, we have had other allegations from other areas. And I'm betting that there are a lot of people that follow stories like this and say, oh, I don't want to be on, on that because there's just a lot of politicking and, you know, all I want to do is sell candy bars or, you know, whatever so my child's band has the instruments or the music that they need. So I think our reputation is really important. And again, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Atkins said, yes, that's right. We put monetary value on our volunteers. And our volunteers, including those that are willing to do fundraising, and typically those that are doing the fundraising are doing other things to support our schools, they're very important to us, and there is a dollar value to that. Now, add it up, does it equal $40,000? With as many schools as we have, and considering our staff time, volunteer worth, and our reputation, you know, that's one of those things, that's priceless. I, I'm very conservative on this, on spending taxpayer money, but I think for work stream two, it would be money well spent. So that's my opinion on it. Other opinions? Yes, who's?
Givenelli.
Ms. Givenelli, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So I would agree with you, Ms. Vaughn. There's laws on the 501(c)(3), and we have a fiduciary duty to make sure that all schools are in compliance. And, you know, just even being active or inactive booster clubs and the 501(c)(3) and them operating on something that's inactive, right there is abuse. And so once abuse is found, then what are we going to do? I think that this is not an isolated incident. I do believe that you have people that are being people. You've got a, every year, those positions change, so I don't know how the training would work for a president and vice president and treasurer and secretary. Those change yearly, possibly sometime sooner if someone quits. So then that training, someone would need to be trained if they step in to take a, the position. So there's a lot of scenarios here that I think that we have to, to be transparent and, and to save dollars and money, I think in the long run, to make sure that everybody's compliant and understands this. And this is something that's going to be ongoing for a very long time. So we have to address that. If we don't, then we are not being transparent. And so I think that as a Board, we have to take the reins here and be the oversight that we are elected to do and have faith. Thank you.
Other comments? Because we're nearing that four o'clock hour, and I think we're going to need to, am I right, Ms. Dupree Bruno, have a consensus on what we want to do? To wait, to move something ahead, right? Okay, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
I have a comment.
Well, all right, go ahead. And then after that, Mrs. Morgan.
Yes. Yes, thank you. So I think this is exactly what the, what was in mind when the Florida Statute 1001 Point 42 advised us to have our own internal auditor along with a Board Attorney. We are ultimately responsible to our public. And those people who are volunteering and donating are also taxpayers. I'm concerned, I, I think that we should go along with training and working on the things that we have discovered so far and utilizing manuals that are existing. And, and Ms. Patrica, you may be right, that this may have been happening over the past decade, but for it to be happening over the past decade, and there have been situations where these allegations have been made before, I think that is incumbent on this Board to move forward with our, or auditor, to get the information we need and to be able to support staff in making improvements and changes that may be needed. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Can I clarify? Because I don't...
All right. Who, I think, do you want her?
Yeah.
All right, so...
Ms. Fisher, I, I didn't say we were having issues with booster clubs over the past 10 years. My, what I, what I meant to convey is that we've had growing pains for the past decade. There are times when issues come to our attention and we realize they need to be addressed, and it's simply because we're getting larger. And, you know, I've talked before about being a district of schools instead of a school district, and this is one of those areas, I believe, where we have added so many high schools to the role, so to speak, that we now need a more uniform system. And, and again, I'll, I'll say, I, I believe there's already a plan in place by staff, and, and the additional $40,000 is kind of overkill when we can give staff a chance and figure out, you know, where, where do we stand and is this even necessary at this point? Thank you.
Just, just for clarification, remember, we're not just talking about high schools. We're talking about all schools.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Morgan, and then I think, Ms. Gittens, you have a question?
Yeah, so my question is for Mr. Dupree Bruno. Do we actually have a fiduciary responsibility for the 501(c)(3)'s?
I use the term fiduciary responsibility, but what the Board Policy specifically says "All organizations of the school and organizations operating in the name of the school which obtain money from the public shall be accountable to the Board for receipt and expenditure of those funds in the manner prescribed by the Board."
So, so my position is this. On one, I believe the investigation's been done. On two, we've been told that there is a manual. It has, it is in the process of being revived as a result of what we've uncovered in this particular instance. And so my preference would be, particularly since we've already got the manual just revising, and it doesn't have a great impact on staff. So my preference would be to move ahead as a district. Our responsibility as a Board, I think, is to look at the manual and to feel confident that it is consistent with our expectations as stated in policy. So that's, I, I would not move forward with either of these recommendations at this time.
Okay. Ms. Gittens, you were next.
I think it's a timing issue as well, in that it's, in my understanding, if we, if a situation happened at one school and we have set staff in place to make changes, that pretty much says that there was something that needed to have been done before that wasn't. Otherwise, if we were doing everything right, we wouldn't have needed to put anything else in place. So it's like we're saying, yes, there were problems, and with going forward, we are going to fix them by doing this, this, and this. And I agree with, you know, with what, and I'm sorry, your last name again?
Manlove.
Okay. Ms. Manlove was saying, in that looking at what staff is doing and putting it all into place, finishing with whatever the, I don't know if you're completed with your part of discussion and, and putting all of that together, Attorney Bruno, and then stepping back and saying, is this something we need to do overall? I think it's just timing. Yes, Ms. Patrica, because we are growing and we are now a $2 billion corporation, we do have to look at doing things differently. And in looking at doing things differently, it may cost us money to do things differently. I don't know how, how much, and I'm not sure at what time. To me, it's just a timing issue, that we put these things together, then look at this and see if we want to go further.
Other comments or responses? Yes, please.
Did you have a comment? Ms. Jordan, please, go ahead.
I, well, the only thing I wanted to share, I know that Mr. Dupree Bruno mentioned 4.32, but in the beginning, the very first sentence is that booster clubs are distinct and apart from the school. Any fees assessed to its members, funds raised or expended, and tax liabilities are the responsibilities of that organization. And then it leads into the rest. So I just want to make sure that, and I think maybe perhaps with the cooperative manual and even that paragraph, that maybe should be strengthened as well to, what is that? I mean, what is our, in the manner prescribed by the Board? What is that manner? We, I don't even know what that manner is.
That would be the cooperative organization guidelines that you do have.
I think that we need to make sure that that is strong so that that, we have that information.
Okay. Other comments?
May I make a recommendation to the Board?
Please.
Based on the discussions that I've heard thus far, perhaps putting a hold on the actual moving forward with the recommendations from RSM. Continue to work with district staff in terms of any training that can address some of the issues that we do know have occurred, as well as reviewing the manual to see what updates need to be done, and then coming back to the Board, and probably some policy update as well, and come back to the Board with those recommendations.
Also going to recommend an updated...
Also going to recommend an updated solution here, based on the feedback that we received from you all today. I'm hearing some interest in WorkStream 2, but perhaps we should break it into two phases. Maybe in order for us to be more helpful to Mr. Atkins and his staff as they implement these updates to the procedure, we could take a look at the procedure manual and provide some recommendations there, like the one Ms. Jordan was just discussing. We could dive into that a little bit further, as well as the rest of the manual. And then later along the line, have a Phase 2, when the timing is right, to do some testing of individual schools and booster organizations to see if they're following the updated procedures the way that we would expect them to.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Patricca.
I'm not clear. For... I'm sorry. It's Dr. Atkins, not Mr. Atkins. He does have a...
Apologies, Dr. Atkins.
Sorry. And I believe Attorney Bruno should be referred to as Attorney Bruno as well. That's the first thing. Second thing is, are you suggesting we go through with WorkStream 1 altered?
No.
I actually didn't comment on WorkStream 1. I really think that is up to the board's discretion. I don't think that's our recommendation as your internal auditors. This is a production of a scope of work based on your direction to us in a prior meeting.
I'm not clear on what it is that you just recommended.
WorkStream 2, we could break it into two phases. I heard some commentary about wanting to look at the Cooperative Organization Procedure Manual. We're happy to do that for the board, to provide some recommendations that we may be able to see from there. And then later on, when the time is right, six months, a year, whatever the timing may be, we could do some detailed testing to go into individual booster organizations and see district-wide, how are we doing complying with this procedure manual?
From what I'm hearing, it sounds like we, as a board, were just really not ready to make this decision. Personally, you know, I wish we'd had this manual for us to review before this discussion, but we will have that manual within the next couple days, right? Correct, Dr. Atkins? Okay. The other thing I do have to say again is, you know, we've had that manual. It was not... You corrected, Dr. Atkins, that it's been in existence for some time. If it's been in existence for some time and we've had this huge issue at Cypress Lake High School, you know, what I take from that is, something wasn't working. And then the other thing, Mr. LaRosa is the... He's the athletic director, and I know for many of us, you think of, especially if you were in sports in high school, you think, oh, athletic booster clubs. But again, the PTAs, the PTA... I mean, every single school has at least one organization that's going to come under this. And I just go back to, and it would be good if we could kind of streamline and, you know, get the cost down, but with the cost of staff time, and that's your realm of expertise doing these kinds of manuals, and yes, we can get manuals from 67 different school districts and, you know, but then there's going to be that argument, which one Broward was better, no St. Lucie's was, and all of that. There is a value to volunteer time. If you want to get really strict and look at fiduciary duty, you know, an argument can be made. It's not taxpayer money. But how about a moral duty that we have as the board representing this school district? I mean, I don't want to have an issue like that that came from Cypress Lake. I don't want to see something like that emerge from another school in six months. I want to be sure that we have everything just right. So there are some things, like our reputation and doing what's right, that's priceless, and that's my opinion. So are we, as a board... Let me see, some consensus. How many of you would like to see...
Can I?
Okay, go ahead.
Can I do too?
I'm sorry.
I have a question for RSM.
Okay, I didn't catch.
I can see.
She's ready for you. Go ahead.
I have a question for RSM.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so after the investigation at Cypress, what is RSM's recommendation with that? Separate that out. I want to know what their recommendation is here, to have a forensic audit? Is that what, and a further audit into their situation?
No, ma'am. Good question. And to clarify, we understood that the internal audit has already been performed, has had some findings, and was provided to the board for their review. We heard from the board that there are still some lingering questions, and we are proposing to the board, as they directed, an independent audit of those specific lingering concerns that are left over after that internal audit.
Thank you. So, my recommendation is, I agree with Mrs. Fisher. We have RSM as an audit, RSM as our new auditor. This is their job, not the staff. This is something that they should proceed and do what they were hired to do as our auditor, or as our board auditor. So, I believe it is time to take a consensus vote to decide to proceed with this situation and not continue kicking the can down the road.
Okay. Let's wrap it up. We'll let each person give one comment on, and let's focus on move ahead now, drop it completely, or reevaluate by, you know, having some other information in between. Comment from each person on that particular area. Ms. Morgan?
So, I reiterate, I'm not interested in doing Stage 1. I like the suggestion that perhaps we ask our auditor to look at the manual. So, and I would prefer to see staff continue and complete their work with a review by RSM, and that's it. And then come back if we need to, to RSM at a later date if we feel that we need to...
Later date, okay. Ms. Gittens?
I have one question before I... I just need to know, is the scope of your... Of our contract with RSM, does that include policy review? And I believe it does.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in the statement that you were making about, you know, looking at policy and all that, in my mind, that would be a part of the second part of this. And so, I honestly, I think I'm looking at what happened with Cypress Lake is in the past, in that there was wrongdoing. We need to have some type of public, either apology or whatever, for what was done, and make sure that it's right going forward, but we do need to publicly address that situation. And then going forward, you know, I like what you said about working with the staff. Policy and procedure is a part of your scope already with us, so that would mean we could renegotiate that $40,000 piece and make it a little more equitable as we go along. But I think timing, we have to first say something publicly about what happened and what we're going to do moving forward.
Okay. And let's remember, let's try to keep this on whether we want to drop it completely, move with it, or the way it is, or give it some more time, in which case we look at the manual already developed. Ms. Jordan?
Personally, I believe that we need to give it more time, get the manual, have them look at the manual, and move forward with it.
Okay. Mrs. Patricca?
I would like to not just look at the manual, but take a look at whatever overall plan has been put in place by staff. I think that we're talking in a very narrow manner about a manual, but I don't think that's the only work staff has done since this occurred.
Okay.
So I'd like to take a look at that, please. And to your point, Ms. Morgan, I hesitate to ask RSM to take a look at it when I haven't seen it myself.
Mrs. Fisher? Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
What's your point of view on this?
I would like to take some time to review the plan that staff has, to look at the manual, and to revisit this after a set time, so that we can make the decision at that time.
Okay. And Mrs. Givenelli?
I have another, one more question, too. Do we not have a duty as a board to determine when monies are missing in this booster club, where they actually went? So we don't have... We won't never proceed to find out what happened to those funds that are not being accounted for?
Ms. Dupree Bruno, how would you answer?
I think there's been allegations of things not being properly... Again, it goes back to governance, that funds were expended without the governance approving it, and I think that was in Mr. Fonaker's evaluation. I think there were some concerns with regards to padding of certain expenditures, but I think all of it actually goes back to governance and how the booster club was being governed and the transparency of providing treasurer's report, those kind of things. I believe that's what all of that stems for, and I think we actually do have a good gist as to what has happened with the booster club. So, we know what happened, and if we can come up with a plan to move forward, which, again, I'm going to recommend that to the board at this point, after listening to the conversation of board members, that we take a look at the manual, we take a look at the plan from the district staff in terms of training and what we can do next to move forward so that we can improve the district system with regards to these types of organizations.
Okay. So let's, at this time, have a consensus, and it's basically what Ms. Dupree Bruno said, that as a board, we look at both the plan, the training plan, and the manual that's already been developed by the district, and then revisit in maybe a couple weeks or so, two, three weeks, revisit this. I'll tell you what, I won't even put a time certain in there. I'm not talking about three years from now, I'm talking about a reasonable amount of time. So consensus, yes, live with it, or no, that we revisit this after having the opportunity to look at the district training plans and manual. Consensus. Ms. Gittens, three?
I still have the caveat of telling them something.
All right. And Ms. Givenelli and Ms. Fisher?
Yes. I agree.
Ms. Givenelli?
Ms. Bruno. I'm not comfortable with nothing happening.
Are you a yes or no or no?
I'm not comfortable with nothing happening after RSM's recommendation.
Okay. Are you wanting to revisit, or are you wanting... Is this a no that you... Just give me a yes or a no, please. Sorry.
Well, I'm not sure what I'm saying yes or no, too.
Okay. The yes or no is, the consensus is on that we take some time, that we look at the existing district manual and the existing district plans for training. And then, within a reasonable amount of time, I don't want to give a time certain, in a reasonable amount of time, after reviewing those things, we come back and discuss again if we feel that necessary with RSM.
Well, the problem I have with this is, if there was an existing training manual...
We're taking Ms. Givenelli.
Why wasn't it...
I understand, but we're closed out... Sorry, I apologize, but we are closed out to more comment. It's a yes or a no. Please.
Well, if I'd known there was a manual, I mean, I don't know how we're here today, and there was an existing manual, so I'm always taken back by that.
Okay. But we've established it now, so do you want to vote, or do you want to do it sideways? It's up to you.
I don't think we're voting for anything except kicking the can down the road, so I'll withhold my judgment.
Okay. So I'm going to take that interpreted as a no. So it's six...
She's got to tell you.
Yeah, she has to tell you.
It's not a...
She has to answer.
All right. I am being told, I've got to get a vote from you, Ms. Givenelli. Yes, no, yes, no, or live with it?
Parliamentarian, is that correct? Since it's just a consensus?
Well, if you are doing a true consensus, then the board should try to see if you can get Ms. Givenelli to become a yes, or at least a no, can live with it, and see what exactly her concerns are, to see if the board can address it, if you're doing a true consensus.
So, thank you. After a few more of these meetings, I'll get all of this in my head. So, Ms. Givenelli, right now, we are six that have voted yes on this. However, as an esteemed member of the board, we want to be sure that you're comfortable and totally understanding. I know it's difficult when you have an echo when you talk and you're not hearing, you can't be here in person, but what is your...
I don't think... Okay, so hear me out for a moment, please.
Sure. Go ahead.
This has been going on for a very long time. This is not fair to parents. This is not fair to actually staff who doesn't even know if they should have a booster club, not have a booster club. There's obviously no rules. Everybody can just run votes, yet there are laws that govern 501(c)(3). So I don't understand why we're just not letting this, abiding by the law. And so, I'm having a hard time, so I'm going to abstain, and you can, y'all can do whatever y'all want to do.
Okay. Ms. Dupree Bruno, is that...
I think, based on the prior comments from Ms. Givenelli, I think there was a concern about if we had this manual before, how did we end up with the issue that came before the board? So, I think this is where the training is going to come in. This has to be part of the solution. So there is a manual. We need to make sure that the manual is being adhered to across the district, and we need to make sure that our administrators are abiding by the manual and that our parent volunteers are abiding by the manual. So I think this is a resolution to try to move it forward with acknowledging that there were some missteps. We acknowledge that. We move forward, and we're going to strengthen the district.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
The other thing that I have also heard, I think, from Ms. Givenelli's concerns with regards to the parents who brought this to the board's attention, and I don't think we want to forget about that, and I believe Ms. Gittens also brought that up. My recommendation to the board would be for... I will talk to them and explain to them the board's decision and what the actions are, and that the board recognizes that they brought this forward, and we appreciate them bringing this forward, and that you are taking some positive steps to move the district in the right direction to resolve these issues.
Well, it's, and it's my understanding, in this consensus, that we are not saying, no, we're not going to do this. What we are saying is, we are not prepared today to move ahead with this recommendation. We need time to review the training and the manual, and I think also, as was just said, whether the schools are actually complying, what is in place to make sure that the schools are following in terms of training.
And I would just add, as keepers and monitors of the taxpayer dollars, this is probably part of your thought process, instead of spending these funds when there could be a solution. I think this is what the board is also indicating.
Okay. Okay, so I think, in terms of today's discussion, we've reached the end of this discussion for today, and, and that it's the, the consensus of the board to get these things, to get, excuse me, the training plan, documentation, that the, the manual is being followed, and actually seeing the manual, and then we will come back and, within a reasonable amount of time, discuss where we want to go from, from here. And that's, that's it, because we are well over time, and we still have public comment. Okay? Is there anything more, Ms. Dupree Bruno, that I need to do to solidify what the outcome of this discussion is?
No, just to re, I, I believe there's a six, six-member consensus with one abstaining.
With one abstaining. Okay, so, thank you, RSM, and we appreciate your, your, your work on this, and certainly we will be getting back to you within a reasonable amount of time, and I, I like, it seems like at least several of us like the idea that you can help initially by helping with the evaluation of what we already have in place. Does that sound reasonable?
Ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for coming, you came from Tampa? Thank you. Okay, at this point in the meeting, we're at public comment, and Ms. Dupree Bruno, would you please read the guidelines for public comment?
Thank you. School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter from this particular agenda. Please complete a blue card, and the rules concerning public comment are posted in the back of the room, and you will speak from the central microphone. Please be advised that the board does not respond during the public comment remarks to the speakers. At the end, the board vice chair, Ms. Vaughn, will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Per Board Policy 1.81, we require that you wear a mask, and we would ask that you sanitize after your public comment. I believe, Madam Chair, that there are two individuals for public comment, and I would just add, I'm sorry, I just would also add that personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited, so is clapping, hissing, and booing, or any display of temper are prohibited. If you fail to follow the decorum, you will be asked to relinquish the microphone. Three minutes are set per speaker, and Madam Chair, I do believe there are two speakers.
Two speakers, is there anyone who wishes to speak who did not have the opportunity to fill out a blue card? Okay, so we call the first speaker.
There are actually three speakers, and the first speaker is Mary Beth Ocean.
Hello? Oh, there you go. First, I'd like to introduce myself, I am a resident from Copper Oaks community. I'd like you all to know that I used to be a former kindergarten teacher up in Fairfax County, Virginia, so I do support education, and it is a priority. I understand, oh, that's too loud, I understand that the schools that you need to build are a must, and, and you need to make a decision as to the site location on Three Oaks, whether you accept that location or do not accept that location. However, there are some flaws I wanted to point out, and two of the major issues are the traffic nightmare that will occur and the safety of our children that will be going to that school, and then the wetland issue, which is crucial, and I'm sorry to say that I do not believe that Dana Johnson, engineering representative, portrayed the true nature of the wetlands. It's 76 acres, 70% is wetlands, versus the Williams location, which I know you had know, that you all wanted to approve. That was 15 acres and much less wetlands. In the wetland location that we have next door to Copper Oaks, it is a working wetland, and there are animals in there and birds who depend on that wetland for their life, and changing this would not only affect the entire community of Astero, it will affect Copper Oaks community. Our community was approved in 2006, 2005, and it passed all requirements in the Lee County jurisdiction. However, we don't have, our water conservation is within the community, we don't depend on your property. Actually, your property next to our property is four to eight feet above our property, so your water is coming in behind some of our homes, and it's standing, it's a wetland, and it's a natural, that's the nature of the beast, but we have a lot of displacement there. That's the wetland side of the issue. The other issue is the traffic nightmare. Most of this traffic is probably going to be coming from east of 75. That means that the traffic will go through the stoplights at 75, and then corkscrew in Three Oaks. There are already backups at Pinewood's Elementary, and Three Oaks Middle School, and Three Oaks Elementary. The backups are an hour long for the kiss and ride lines. Now, this site school that you have in...
Yeah, your time.
Your time is up, thank you.
Scott Gulick?
Hello, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand before you today. My name is Russell Sky Gulick, I also live in the Copper Oaks estate. There's just a few statements I would like to make. One is about the traffic and the safety of the children that would be attending the Copper, or the Astero pre-K through 8. Just to let you know, it's .2 miles entrance into the Astero Medical Center, and then it's .3 miles into the school, it's .4 miles to the post office, and then it's .5 miles into Copper Oaks. So you're talking about the major post office for the city of Astero being located. The property, from my understanding, is still the school district property and is being leased to the post office, from my understanding, but I could be... You can't call a neighborhood school when you have a open enrollment for picking a school, okay? We all want a neighborhood school, but if you have an open enrollment, you can't call it a neighborhood school. Previously, somebody had made a statement that Copper Oak has a list of issues, reiterating the sentence by the village of Astero or by the county of Lee County, we have not had any sanctions or any violations against us. We have a green space, but they made it sound like it was a large circumference area. This green space is all wooded and water. So why are, my questions are, why are we just now drafting student population dots of students needed, was one of the things brought up today. The charter school, when the project for Astero School was first discussed, was the charter school already built? 70% of wetland. What is the impact versus the cost? Evaluation of water runoff. Where is this water going to go? The post office. The stacking of 235 vehicles. Have they accounted for pickups, projected times that they're going to have to wait? We have two elementary schools, two miles from where Astero is planning to build the new pre-K. We have Three Oaks and Pinewood's Elementary. Astero, as previously stated by one person, are older population.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Michael?
I'm Jamie Michael, I'm president of Support Personnel Association of Lee County. Today, you reviewed managerial discipline guidelines for transportation employees. You have to have three readings before these are passed. I am asking you to look at number eight, use of personal electronic devices, including cellphone in the presence of students or while operating a school bus. The first offense is termination. Past practice, when we dealt with employees with this issue, they have had progressive discipline, which they talked to them the first time, and they may get a three or five-day suspension depending upon the severity. I am asking that you look at that and review that, termination for a first offense, when it could be, they don't remember why they were on the cellphone, and it could be management called them on the radio, said, pull over, call us on the cellphone, and they may not find out for five days, because it could be a community member called them in, and they just don't remember what they used that cellphone for. So I am asking that you look at that before you pass this, and maybe consider putting another step before termination. Thank you.
Okay, and that's all the blue cards, Ms. Dupree Bruno?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Briefly, thank you to Mr., I'm not saying this right, Gulick and Ms. Ocean. We value being a good neighbor to our, our local communities. Hopefully, both of you have the opportunity to listen to our first presentation earlier today. I think that, at least to my way of thinking, it, the, the issues having to do with traffic were well addressed, and, okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing no's, I can't discuss it with you, but I, I would say that if you have more issues with the traffic, that you can perhaps contact Dr. Atkins, and he will put you in touch with one of these, the people like Ms. Eba, that can answer more specific questions for you. We really didn't discuss at length the wetlands, and of course, that is, that is an issue, and again, this might be something that you can address more specifically with a member of staff, and Dr. Atkins can put you in touch with them. I'd like you also to remember that initially, we were using the Williams, right off Williams Road, that property, and we did have, I don't know if you have talked to board members of the Astero, the Village of Astero Council, but there, they had, they had issues with locating it there, so you might also, besides talking to us as a school district, talk with them. Dr. Atkins, did you have anything else to add?
No, just if, just so I can make sure that we have your contact information, if you didn't put it on the blue, if you put it on the blue card, great, and all right, we will, we will be in touch with you based on the information you provided. Okay?
Okay, and Ms. Michael, thank you for the heads up on that, I'm sure all of us will, on the next reading, we will take a look at what you, what you mentioned, so thank you, thank you for that. Okay, this brings us to, and we are about 40 minutes over, but we still want everybody on the board to have the opportunity to make comments if they so wish. So let's start with the ladies on, on the phone. Ms. Fisher, Ms. Fisher, do you have any comments at this time?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Givenelli, any comments at this time?
Yes, I necessarily have one comment for Dr. Atkins, regarding live graduations, I've already been, being contacted by parents. We do have dates, don't we? We just don't have any decisions made regarding actual, what graduation looks like for the class of 2021?
Do have dates, yes, that is correct.
Do you know the dates? Because I'm already being questioned.
I know that we have them, yes, Ms. Schaefer and I were discussing them literally today. She showed, she showed me those dates, so we can certainly get those dates to you.
Okay. And do you have, are you with principal meeting to discuss the plan for live graduation?
Yes.
Okay.
Being over Dr. Spiro to make sure, he's, he's nodding his head.
Ah, okay. Do you, when were you making a decision on that, at an announcement?
I don't know if you have, I, in the very near future, we should be able to make a decision regarding graduations.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
I'll go ahead and we'll discuss it, I know we have a, a meeting, we actually have a cabinet meeting tomorrow, so we could certainly discuss it, and then we could follow up with the board, either tomorrow or the next day, in a board, or the board update.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Ms. Michael, I have zero issues with revisiting it as long as we maintain termination as the go-to disciplinary approach if a cellphone is being used while operating the bus. I don't have an issue with a progressive system if it's using the cellphone in the presence of a child, but if we're using the cellphone while operating a bus, I think that should result in automatic termination. That being said, I'm glad you brought it up, and we'll take, we'll take a look as a board. Ms. Givenelli, I wanted to thank you for your willingness to abstain from the RSM vote, not vote, the RSM consensus, so that the board could move forward. I think that that's exactly what we've determined how consensus should work. And finally, I'd like to speak to my almost neighbors in Astero. You all are practically my neighbors, and I'm happy to hear that your contact information is on file, because I intend to reach out and ask to meet for coffee, or maybe we can get one of those rooms at the library and meet together, or meet at a park outside with masks on and socially distanced, however it makes sense to you. This is a process. What you saw today was the very beginning of that process. You saw very rough drawings. We want you to be happy and proud of the school that we build in Astero, and I believe that working with you to address your concerns throughout the process is the way to get there. I, I hear your concerns, understand that I'm a parent with four children that live in that community, and I would never approve the location of a school that raised any safety concerns for our students whatsoever. Any school that I approve would be a school that I would be proud to send my own children to. So I'd like to start with that as a basis, as we move forward with discussions, and again, hopefully this is the beginning of a nice, long relationship, and at the end, I bet you'll be volunteering in our schools and sharing your expertise with our kids, and really making that school part of our community. So thank you for being here today, I know it's a long drive from Astero, especially when you have to get on corkscrew, I don't have to do that, but I, I know it's a long drive, and, and I look forward to getting to know you all very, very much better. Those are my comments, all right.
Thank, thank you. Mrs., Ms. Jordan?
I really don't have any comments, just belate it, this is our first meeting, so belate it. Happy New Years, I'm looking forward to a great year.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
I think I'm fine for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan?
I do have one thing. Just thank you, thank you to those that took the time out of your day to come and let us know your thoughts. That's what drives our engine is to know what the community who put us here want us to know. So, thank you for your time.
Mrs. Morgan?
I do have comments. Construction Advisory. Members of the committee remain unsatisfied by selected components of the updated RFQ process that we, that Frederick Ross brought to us on July 1, 2020. So, they're going to work on recommendations to the board for further improvements over the next few meetings. There was a long discussion about the impact of the inter-local agreement with, the district's inter-local agreement with the county that governs property improvements, et cetera. As a result of that, I spoke to Dr. Atkins and he said it was okay for me to speak with Ms. Eba about looking at the inter-local agreement. I spoke with Ms. Eba. She tells me that James Holloway is actually looking at the document, but I have not received it. I'm hoping that all members of the board will have an opportunity to look at the inter-local agreement. Apparent, it's my understanding from talking to the superintendent and from talking to the people in construction advisory, that when that inter-local agreement was written, it was written 100% in favor of the county and therefore we run into significant delays and costs as a result of trying to negotiate with things that typically school districts would not be negotiating with municipalities. It turns out, and so this is really a question for Dr. Atkins, have we learned whether or not that 2019 legislation affecting CTE is consistent with what we are asking in our 2021 legislative agenda or therefore nullifying it or do we, you know, where are we on that?
Yeah, I haven't seen, haven't had an update on that yet, but I know Ms. Stillwell was looking at that with Ms. Davis.
So, Rita Davis learned in conversation with CTE directors across the state that the initiative we're proposing with respect to CTE, the ability to have instructors, adjunct instructors for our technical colleges, there is actually legislation, I've lost my train of thought, actual legislation in 2019 that permitted that, but what's not clear is whether or not there was flexibility in terms of compensation. So, it's not clear that whether they provided an alternative for compensation or whether that would be something we would have to negotiate internally, but apparently adjunct is allowed. So, we may have to rethink where we stand on that and as Dr. Atkins said, Ms. Stillwell is looking at it. Let's I do want to say, Ms. Patrica brought this up at the end of our workshop. I don't think we have enough time for workshops. I don't think we're giving enough time to particularly the superintendent's initiatives. You know, I realize that we got through it quickly. We didn't get through it quickly. We got through it a little bit late and that's, and that's fine, but I'm not sure that we really had the conversation we wanted to have. So, I'm just throwing a pitch out there also. We do workshops on initiatives on the strategic plan. I think we need to give enough time for it. I had a thought, listening to early childhood education talk about their policy council and then thinking about the student advisory, that made me think about how we run our SACS and the fact that the way the parent advisory for the, or the parent council for the policy council for early childhood, the way they run their meetings and student advisory runs their meetings seems to get more involvement of members of the public because they are actually doing the meetings. And so, I'm just throwing that comment out there. Maybe we need to think about, you know, SACS and who's doing what in the SAC. And those are my comments for today. Thank you.
I'm actually going to piggyback off of what Ms. Morgan just said about the workshop and also say, I think the same thing is true, especially on the briefings as well. This is my second time to run a briefing meeting and I was like focused on keeping track of the time and all of that and that's really, really important, but there are some discussions where we just need more time and I would rather see our planning of the agendas err on the side of, you know, we had a little too much time than, you know, today where all of us feel like we're under the gun. It's time. It's, you know, we're running 30 minutes late. This, we have to abide by the sunshine law and during our workshops and again, during our briefings, as we hear these, some of these initiatives and what's going on in other departments in our school district, this is our time to ask questions and, you know, get into some discussions. So, I agree with those of you and yeah, I think there was yesterday a mistake on the times. Obviously, there was three, four-hour meetings, but we only had three hours to do it. So, yeah, moving forward, I would like to see that.
Madam Chair, may I add to that?
Sure.
I think this is the second briefing you've run?
Yeah.
And I've been very appreciative of your ability to keep us on task, on time, and I suspect your children were never late for anything.
But I've been.
I've appreciated the discipline that you've brought to the role. Thank you.
Okay, well, and I appreciate your saying that and it's, sometimes it's a little bit difficult sometimes to say to a colleague that, you know, has a lot to say, to say, "No, we need to do this" or "No, we need to close this out" and that's something I'll get more used to, but the old 38 years in the classroom with the big kids, you kind of learn how to do that. And that's really all I have to say at this point. Ms. Dupree Bruno, do you have some comments?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Okay, and Dr. Atkins?
No comments either, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so, we've come to the end of our business today and we will be back in these seats in what, 50, let's see, an hour and-
Six minutes.
-six or seven minutes. So, meeting adjourned.